We're going to get started this evening. Want to thank everybody for being here. At this time, we will call the meeting to order and I would like to call our junior citizens forward. Emma, Jimmy, and Daniel. And I'd ask everyone else to please stand and they are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd ask that you please remain standing. We have two moments of silences that we want to observe. The first is the passing of the Florida, the past president of the Florida League of Cities, past president and former mayor of Rockledge, Larry Schultz. And then, much closer to home and probably without saying, but much closer to all of our hearts, is the passing of our local hero and friend, Alexander Skip Stadnik. He passed away yesterday morning, Monday, May the 7th. Skip's family was considered a founding family of Miami Springs, Florida, where family members were merchants in several business ventures and very active in the community, with Skip even running for a seat of town mayor in the late 1960s. But Skip's loss as mayor and Miami Springs' loss was Wilton Manor's gain, when Skip and Ruth Ann, his wife of 45 years, relocated to the city of Wilton Manors over Labor Day weekend 1979. And their love for each other grew into a lifelong love of their newly adopted island city. Skip was a pharmacist by trade, having trained paramedics during his military service, while Skip and Ruth Ann's business ventures in Wilton Manors included a spa and hot tub business, general consulting or construction, and roofing. Skip did pool design work until retiring in his early 60s, at which time he became more involved in the community, having served on the city's Community Affairs Advisory Board for over 10 years, originally appointed in June of 2005. Skip celebrated his 80th birthday on March 22nd, 2014, and was one of the few recipients of a key to the city. Skip loved all of the city events benefiting the youth in our community and was always seen at the annual Santa's Enchanted Evening, the Spooktacular, Kiwanis Kids' Day, the Extravaganza, and others. He was a featured speaker at our annual Veterans' Day ceremonies and he was a celebrated as our city veteran honoree in the 2016 United Way Broward County Mayor's Gala. You knew you ran into Skip when you hear his tagline, "Who loves you, baby?" And you knew the correct answer was God and Skip. Ruth Ann recently came across a sign that Skip posted on the wall that read, OWL spelled O-W-L, "Always Love You." And what we wouldn't give to hear another, "Who loves you, baby?" We've always loved your right back, Skip Stadnik, and we always will. So please join me in a moment of silence for Skip. Please be seated.
Vice Mayor, I'm disappointed you didn't say his whole name.
Well...
I don't think any of us could do that.
Scott, since you've spoke up, why don't we have you welcome everybody here this evening?
Welcome, everyone, tonight. We have some great things going on in City Wilton Manors. We have the university students here, the youngest crowd we think we've had in the last couple of years. But they had a great time and hopefully one of them will tell a story or two about their experience here in Wilton Manors. And I thank everyone for coming out tonight and I hope you enjoy your evening.
All right, thank you, sir. Let's go with roll call, please.
Commissioner Carson?
Here.
Commissioner Green?
Here.
Commissioner Newton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Here.
Mayor Resnick.
All right, colleagues, additions, changes, or deletions to the agenda? Does anyone have any? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Proclamations. Our first proclamation is for pioneer Arlene Lancaster. And so I know that she is in the house. I saw her earlier.
Never says a word.
So we're going to read this official proclamation and then present it to her. Interestingly enough, I was told by one of the members of the audience that, was it today was Teacher Appreciation Day? And so Arlene was a schoolteacher at one point in her journey, and so how very fitting that we're also honoring her on this day as well. So whereas, Arlene Lancaster moved to Wilton Manors in January 1974 to join her husband, Duane, who had gone ahead for his job as a sportswriter for the Sun Sentinel newspaper; and whereas, Arlene, with a degree in education, taught school in Michigan for a short period; upon moving to Wilton Manors, she focused on her family, becoming active in community affairs because of her three children, who participated in sports and other events; and whereas, Arlene served as a member of the and officer of the school PTA, Mother's Council, Wilton Manors Baseball, and Wilton Manors Recreation Volunteers. She also taught Sunday School and started a preschool program at the old Hagen Park Community Center. And whereas, in 1984, Arlene returned to her passion of helping and teaching students, she worked as a teacher at the Wilton Manors Elementary School for 32 years and continues to volunteer there in her retirement, as well as tutor children at the Wilton Manors Public Library. Her impact on almost two generations of students has been incalculable. And whereas, Arlene served as a city commission-appointed member of the Wilton Manors Recreation Advisory Board for 25 years and continues to enjoy Wilton Manors recreational facilities as an avid tennis player, she has been a member of the All Volunteer Nonprofit Friends of the Wilton Manors Library for some 30 years and currently serves as its president. The community of Wilton Manors and especially our children have benefited greatly for 44 years because of the dedication and generosity of this remarkable woman. Whereas, the Wilton Manors Historical Society has chosen Arlene Lancaster as the pioneer to represent the City of Wilton Manors at the Broward County Historic Preservation Board's Pioneer Day Celebration on May 12th, 2018, in the Town of Davie, now therefore be proclaimed by the City of Wilton Manors in recognition thereof, Tuesday, May 8th, 2018, is known as Arlene Lancaster Day in the City of Wilton Manors, as we honor Arlene Lancaster for her service and commitment to the city and for representing the City of Wilton Manors at Pioneer's Day Celebration. And it is signed with the city's seal and the mayor's will be signing this upon his arrival. So, Arlene, we'd love to take a picture with you as a commission.
By the way, she taught all three lightens and turned up pretty good, so...
up to honor me tonight. I appreciate that. And I'm just gonna say, two score and four years ago, I arrived in this fair city and I loved it immediately. It's an emotion which hasn't ever decreased. I wish to thank the Historical Society for this overwhelming honor and to the City Commission for its proclamation. My family and I have really enjoyed living here and have no intention of ever leaving, so Wilton Manors has stuck with us. It has been a proud, a profound pleasure serving this community, and if I could, I'd re-enlist for two more score. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Arlene, the city clerk will get you the signed proclamation to you, okay?
No problem.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, the second proclamation we have this evening is for Women's Lung Health Week, which is also dubbed Turquoise Takeover, which, as you can tell by some of our colors that we're sporting, in support of that cause. Whereas lung cancer is an urgent healthcare crisis in America, causing more deaths than any other cancer; and whereas, in 1987, lung cancer surpassed breast cancer as a leading cancer killer among women in the United States; and whereas lung cancer awareness remains critically low despite being the number-one cancer killer of women, 98% of women don't even have lung cancer on their radar, 61% of women incorrectly believe or are not sure that lung cancer has a similar survival rate to other cancers, when in fact lung cancer survival rates are about five times lower than other major cancers; and whereas, close to 400,000 Americans are living with lung cancer and nearly 160,000 Americans die of lung cancer each year, the number of women dying from lung cancer each year has nearly doubled over the past 30 years; and whereas, this week, the City of Wilton Manors is participating in Turquoise Takeover, a campaign to raise awareness for National Women's Lung Health Week and Lung Force, an American Lung Association movement in the fight against lung cancer in women, now therefore be proclaimed by the City of Wilton Manors, that the week of May 6th through May 12th is known as National Women's Lung Health Week in the City of Wilton Manors. And this will be signed by our mayor and delivered at that time to the recipient. And I do believe that we have some folks here. So, colleagues, you want to come down again and do another quick photo?
My name is Violet Nicolichy-Larry. I'm the Director of Student Services at Kaiser University, Fort Lauderdale, and I'm on the Board of Directors for the American Lung Association of South Florida. On behalf of the American Lung Association of South Florida, thank you for proclaiming Turquoise Takeover Week, May 6th to the 12th. It is a serious cancer in our community, and by wearing turquoise, you're signifying that you are aware of lung cancer. It is the number-one killer amongst men and women, and over 426 people die every day due to lung cancer. My mother-in-law has lung cancer, that's why I'm doing this, and she never smoked. So don't have the idea that it's just because of smoking. So, thank you so much, everyone, for participating in Turquoise Takeover Week. You still have time. Take pictures in the community and hashtag Turquoise Takeover. Thank you so much and have a good evening.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, we have two presentations on the agenda. The first of our Wayfinding Program by AXIA.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, Roberta Moore, Community Development Services' Director. This evening, we're going to provide an update on the Wayfinding Sign Program. With me is Todd Mayfield from AXIA Creative. I'd just like to go over real briefly where we are with this program right now, but I'll turn the lights down first.
Yeah, someone usually does it on their own.
So, program update of where we are again. On October 10th of 2017, the City Commission received a presentation from AXIA Creative. From that meeting, staff was directed to place options number two and four in a survey. When we go further into this presentation, option number two is shown as Concept One and option number four is shown as Concept Number Two. We're gonna go over the survey results. We are seeking to finalize the design of the Wayfinding Program and then go over the next steps for this. So with that, the survey, a total of 461 votes were casted online, 66 votes were cast in person. Of those, Concept One did receive the majority of the votes, at 388, where Concept Two received 139 of those votes. So this is Concept One. When we presented this survey out to the public, we only provided the gateway sign. We did not provide the additional signs, however, for the presentation purposes, you'll see both the gateway and the additional signs. So again, Concept One. These are the additional signs that would go with it, the vehicular, the parking guide, the parking identity informational kiosk, as well as water access points. Concept Two is what was also presented. This is the gateway version of it, with these being the accessory, the vehicular, water, parking, and informational kiosks. So the next steps, again, we're looking to finalize the design. We'll also go into the design development. AXIA will assist the city with the bid specs to move forward. We're looking at the location of these signs. AXIA will be meeting with FDOT to ensure that the sign design and the locations do meet their standards and their requirements. There's some probable cause estimates that AXIA was able to provide for both of the options. With that, will also come some scale drawings, a timeline, again, the location of the signs, which was duplicate and I apologize for that. Probable costs, we can have AXIA explain this, a little bit more Todd can. But essentially, these are rough costs that Todd was able to receive from a vendor that he utilizes. If you have specific questions, we can have Todd answer those at this point. But this, again, just gives a general idea of what those costs could be. We do feel as if the installation of these signs could be done in-house, that we did not necessarily need to have a vendor install the signs for us. There are some additional color options, if you would like to go through those, that Todd was able to provide for us, again, based on the concepts of the two sign designs. So here, you'll see a different color option for the gateway, and then the accessory signs go along with it. Another concept for color. And then for the second option, again, just a different design, color scheme, rather. So with that, if you have specific questions of either staff or Todd, we're here to answer them. But again, we are looking to get some direction from the commission to move forward with this program.
Okay, that's good to hear. Colleagues, questions? Tom?
I wanted to know how many gateway signs we're talking about and/or possible location...
I think that currently we have, we have about 11 gateways. I'm sorry, Todd Mayfield from AXIA Creative. We have about 11 gateways currently. Is that correct, Roberta?
Yeah.
And we're not sure if we'd replace all of those yet. There's a few that we're debating, and there's some indication that we might move locations as well. That comes in the next phase, when we get into the design development.
And will these all be probably median locations?
Not every sign. Because of the size of the sign, there may be some existing locations where we may have some setback issues, where if a median is too narrow, that the size of the sign that's slated for that area either has to be scaled down or it might be located on the right side of the road.
And finally, the largest of the gateway signs would be what height?
We don't have the scale on it, but I'm imagining it's about 12 to 16 feet.
Oh, I see a person there.
Yeah, that's a six-foot, six-foot person there.
Commissioner, you good? All right. Commissioner Carson?
With regard to the...
Pick the mic up about an inch. There you go.
With regard to the height, one of our residents was concerned that 16 feet, which he believed these to be, was gonna be way too high, almost overbearing. I don't necessarily believe that, but I'd like to hear your comments on the height at 16 feet.
Well, I think one of the things we'll do first, as we get into the next phase, is we'll mock up a Photoshop version of what these signs look like in the environment, in their place, and that will help us determine whether or not the scale is appropriate. I believe that the gateway sign needs to be a little more substantial than what you have now, you know? They're very low-key. I think that you can celebrate the community by something that's up more vertical. So I think that once we do get into those mockups, I think that'll be very telling. And they can be scaled down. We just want to make sure that they have the right presence.
With regard to the palm trees on top, I like that image, which ties into our seal and our logo and so many other things that are historically a part of our city and now are a part of our branding. But I noticed the smaller signs only have one palm tree. And I didn't know, it's kinda like, we have this great consistency of image and then we have one palm tree. It kinda looks like, as somebody may have said here, maybe a little bit of a swizzle stick. So, wondering if there is the possibility of having a little group of trees.
Yeah, we can consider that. The initial thought was that, because of the scale of the pole, that by having a group of palm trees, it gets so tiny and delicate that you kinda lose it. And I'm also the belief that redundancy kinda diminishes the brand, you know? When you repeat something over and over again, it starts to lose its, I don't know, its depth. So in this case, we felt that a single palm tree might have a quicker read, rather than a group of small palm trees. We can definitely, you know, explore that, too.
And I hadn't heard that concept, that it diminishes the brand when you keep the same continuity, but I would like to explore that and get, you know, the best impact. And last, I couldn't add up all the numbers, but I'm guessing it's about 50,000 for all of the signs?
Well, what you saw there, and we didn't have the time to look through it all, but these are one-off costs. So we didn't, we haven't expanded the quantity of signs yet. We have a rough idea, but, and again, these are very rough estimates. Vendors that tend to give us these initial estimates tend to go on the high side because they wanna, they don't know all the details yet. So, once we determine the exact count and the final design of these signs, then we'll get a better idea of what this is gonna cost.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Scott, you good? All right. Todd, just a couple of items. FDOT has signed off on the general concept, but not given final clearance. Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, it's not been official. The thing that I'm cautious with FDOT or any DOT is that sometimes when you talk to a representative, they might be lower on the food chain. So they tend to, they may approve things and give you an indication that we're good to go, and then somebody higher up looks over their shoulder and sees the program and chimes in, and now we're all out of compliance. So I think that as we get into further discussions with them, we'll press on the point that let's make sure that your higher-ups have seen the design and we do have a consensus. So that'll be in the next phase.
That'll be in the second phase, okay. And then I just wanted to chime in and echo what Commissioner Carson had said. Repetition in marketing has always been, at least what I do outside of my commission work, important. I work for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and so imagery and marketing and that repetition in the audience's mind is important to understand a brand. And so while, of course, it pulls from the element, you know, I'm wondering if there's a smaller grouping perhaps that might be able to better approximate what the larger sign looks like.
Sure, yeah, we can look into that. The thing that we have discovered in, over the years of doing branded wayfinding, is that we try to pull away from just stamping the logo on everything. It becomes very redundant. In marketing, it's really important because you're trying to, you're trying to communicate the brand, whereas this is now, you've arrived, let's celebrate the experience of the brand. And so you can kind of, as long as you follow the essence of the brand, I think it has much more depth. Otherwise, it becomes, you know, it's like white noise. You see it, you see it again, and pretty soon, you don't see it anymore.
Yeah. And I would say that I appreciate the larger signs being an important part of the element because right now, we have neighborhood kind of signs, which of course is a hallmark to our city in the way we identify ourselves, but we've grown over the years and we want folks to know that we're not the neighborhood of Wilton Manors. We are the city of Wilton Manors and proud of it. So I appreciate the larger signs being a part of this. Roberta, this goes to you. You're looking for direction from this commission this evening. We wanted to go out to the public, do the survey. We've done that process. We see the concept before us. I'm willing to entertain a motion from my colleagues. Is that where we're at, at this juncture?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, colleagues, with that being said, unless there are any additional comments, I'd be willing to entertain any motions relative to us moving forward.
I'll make my comment after the motion.
Okay.
Motion to move forward with Concept One, I believe that's what it is.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Carson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Newton. Discussion. Commissioner Green.
First of all, I'm one of the people that thinks it looks like a swizzle stick. It looks to me like you brought it back from Hawaii. And I must add that...
I didn't, ladies and gentlemen.
Because you wouldn't have a swizzle stick, and I understand that. I must add that I did feel a bit better about the second color for Concept One. Concept One had, in one of those, red and yellow and... This is number two, right?
Second color.
This is the second color. Two, yeah. This one seemed a little more restful. Now, maybe you don't, you know, maybe we don't want restful, but that red was...
Can't pop too much.
Yeah, it's a little too much for me personally.
The red in this one, Commissioner?
No, no, no. Can we see?
No, color one.
Okay, let's see.
One A, this was one B.
Thank you.
Got it.
I like the Concept One B personally.
That's fine. I'm not gonna care about color scheme.
Should.
I mean, come on.
Well...
No, no, I will defer to preferences.
Can we see the other one again?
Commissioner Green, you have the floor, though.
No, I was gonna say, I kinda get a sense that everyone's happy to go along with this tonight, so I will not vote my true feelings on the sign and join in with everyone else.
But we appreciate you letting us know how you feel always, Commissioner. All right. Other comments? Commissioner Carson?
In addition to the motion I made, do we need to give color direction tonight or not?
If you could, yes.
Okay, so amend your motion.
Kind of a code.
Amend your motion.
Well, I need to amend my motion, but I want to get the consensus of...
I'm fine with B. B, you?
No. I actually like Concept Two better than Concept One. I just think for the, in some of the areas, we're gonna have, maybe on Power Line and maybe Andrews, maybe, in the middle of the street there, in the medians, the second one is a little thinner. It's not as wide, correct? It's about half the width? And that's the only thing I wonder, that would, you know, it would stand better, stand out better like that in the middle of our medians coming into Wilton Manors.
Well, I know that in the process, we did ask FDOT to chime in on both.
Correct.
And my only thought on that, Commissioner Newton, would be, we went out to the general public and overwhelmingly see where they were, and that, I believe, was something you were advocating very strongly for. So I wouldn't want to buck the public on what they wanted. No, no, but that's what I'm saying. That would be my only concern relative to wanting to go ahead with Concept Two. But the motion on the floor is for Concept One, so was there an amendment?
Not yet.
Well...
Just one last comment. I agree with you and I like this better. To me, it looks like we're finally getting around to art in public places in Wilton Manors. But again, the overwhelming majority... But again, the overwhelming majority of the people like the other one, so I will...
Exactly, same premise.
Agree with that.
I would have finished, that's what I was...
Gentlemen, help me with the color.
No red.
One B, one B, I think is where everyone's gravitating.
Yeah, I like that one better.
So I would amend my motion to move forward with Concept One B.
Okay, unless there's an objection, I'll consider the motion so amended. Any other comments for discussion? No? Okay. Colleagues, again, we definitely went through this quite extensively with our residents, with a lot of other boards and from Economic Development Task Force and Business Improvement District and others, so that they all weighed in, and I know that they all gravitated also towards this, as did the general public. So I'm very comfortable with where we're at, and I look forward to supporting this and seeing the city move forward.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention that when you said board, I think it was the Economic Development Task Force that did this, and they spent months on this.
Absolutely.
So, and this was one of the two they suggested, and they really worked and talked about every little nuance, more than you would want to listen to. So I'm very happy with our, making them happy.
Okay. All right, so unless there's anything else, are there any objections to the motion? Seeing none the motion carries, but per our city code charter, rather, we'll have a clerk proceed with the roll call and vote.
Commissioner Carson?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Sure.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Yes.
That was a yes.
All right, again, that motion does carry, and you've been given your direction, Roberta. Thank you very kindly for all of your work on this. All right. Our next presentation is the Island City University graduation, and I will turn over this to, I believe, to the dean of the Island City University. The second dean of the Island City University. I am a graduate under the first dean's tenure, so we'll let our clerk take it from here. You bet.
Good evening, everybody. Vice Mayor, Commission, and Residents. The Island City University was formed after the city commission brought the idea forward to city staff, and the intention of the ICU was to provide an opportunity for Wilton Manners to become more civic-minded and with a strong understanding of city processes. Classes started on March 19th, and over a period of seven weeks, staff taught a wonderful inquisitive group of participants about the operations of the city of Wilton Manners. Over the course of those seven weeks, each department held a class either here in the chamber, in the EOC, or in the respective departments. The group got a little taste of city history, heard from the mayor and the commission and the city management. They also learned where their tax dollars go, how the city balances their budget, details of the hiring process. They learned about zoning code and permit processes, and through the hands-on activities, the group also learned about fire and EMS trucks, scoping a drainpipe, I believe. Very interesting. And they even got to meet and do a lot of playing around with our canine officer, Diego. Each class was filled with great information, and we feel confident that the participants learned much more than they expected and now have a great understanding of how the city operates. I'd like to take this time to thank all the city staff who had a hand in planning and presenting throughout the past seven weeks. A special thanks to our sponsors, Goran Sheriff, Duty &amp; Ezreal, Attorneys at Law, Conceptual Communications, Westway Towing, and the Friends of the Library, Waste Management, and Calvin Giordano and Associates. I also want to send a huge thank you to all the restaurants we've partnered with throughout these seven weeks, which provided delicious food, by the way, which are Ethos, Zona Fresca, The Primanti Brothers, Mini Pita Plus, New York Grilled Cheese, TJ's, and PDQ. And now, I'd like to start the graduation ceremony by calling up each participant to accept their diploma. First up is Miguel Bernard Rivera.
Front and center.
Front and center.
All about you.
Ronald Bernard Rivera. David Demacoli. Stanley Erler. Brian Garrett. Karen Horwitz. Ralph Johnson. Gene Marcus. Christopher Meneno. Miriam Richter. Mario Rios. And last but not least, Carl Shearer. Ladies and gentlemen, may I present to you the Island City University graduating class of 2018. Congratulations.
Thank you, we're glad to hear it. None, stop it.
It's always great celebrating achievements, and when our citizens get active in our city government, it's a hallmark of what it is to be a part of Wilton Manners. So graduates, congratulations. And I remember sitting with you, Karen, in the police academy, and you had all the questions, let me tell you.
Vice Mayor, I would like to say that the overall increase was, from the pre-test to the post-test, the group increased their test-taking by thirty-six percent.
That's great.
So average was about in the seventies, so you guys learned a lot.
Wonderful, wonderful. Well, again, congratulations to each and every one of you. Thank you so much. All right, you guys can hang with us for the next two and a half hours, or you are welcome to go home and be with your families. Stanley's already waving goodbye, so very good. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll proceed next to comments from the public. If you would like to speak on any item, you're certainly welcome to do so. You'll be given three minutes to speak. We just ask that you identify your name and address for the record, and... Leanne, was there something else that I was supposed to mention? Oh, okay. All right, so if anyone would like to come forward and comments from the public, you may do so at this time.
Yes, Don.
Sir?
Oh, that's what...
Everybody has a number.
Oh, we've given out numbers, wonderful. So that helps keep everybody in order, then. And sir, you can leave your number on the dais there or on the podium when you leave, then.
We're going to use it again.
My name is Don Howchens.
Name and dress, yep.
My name is Don Howchens. Eight thirteen Northwest Twenty-Sixth Street. Meckel Field is my backyard. And I've been here longer than Arlene Lancaster. I've been here forty-eight years in this wonderful city. I have a little concern over this canine issue. I do not want it to become a, to define our police department. I'm a dog owner. I realize sometimes you have to restrain your dogs. This thing, as usual, the media and the social media have blown it completely out of proportion. These officers do a wonderful job. They do what? They help us, and that never gets in the news, and that angers me. And I had my daughter call me from Gainesville this morning and said, "What's going on down there? It's just totally ridiculous." My wife and I feel very, very safe living in Wilton Manners, thanks to these people. They're always visible, they're always on our street, and I just hope this thing goes away without any ramifications. And I one-hundred percent support our Wilton Manners Police Department. I always have and have always felt, as I said, very, very safe in my town, and Wilton Manners is the best city in the United States, and as you can tell, I'm from the hills of Kentucky. So thank you very much, and thank you for your...
Thank you, sir. All right, next up is Mr. Joel Carr.
Joel Carr, twenty-six, twenty-four, Northeast Second Avenue. I agree with that gentleman who just spoke. I feel totally safe with the police department in this city, and I think they do a great job, including the canines. But what I wanted to make sure was that the city did not remove any kind of funding from the Pride Center, because I think that would be a disservice to the Pride Center and a disservice to us as a city.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Up next, Mr. Paul Cuda.
My name is Paul Cuda, and I reside at five hundred Northeast Twenty-Eighth Street in Wilton Manners. Mayor Gary Resnick has served as a Wilton Manners elected official with great distinction for some twenty years. He has expended considerable time, talent, and energy for the betterment of our community, and I have always supported him in his election campaigns. In announcing his candidacy for reelection as mayor two years ago, Mr. Resnick stated that, if elected, this would be his last term in office. With that in mind, certain individuals made decisions with regard to the local election this November. Vice Mayor Justin Flippin announced earlier this year that he is a candidate for mayor. With Mr. Flippin's seat an open one, Mr. Paul Rowley announced his candidacy as city commissioner. Then the confusion began. Mayor Resnick changed his mind and stated that he is running for reelection as mayor. This lasted until April twenty-eighth, when Mr. Resnick announced at the Volunteers Appreciation Luncheon that, instead of being a candidate for mayor, he would stand for election as a city commissioner. This is truly unfortunate. Mayor Resnick is at the top of his game and has much to offer in other fields of endeavor that would take less of his time. For example, I think he would be a wonderful chair of the Wilton Manners Charter Revision Committee in the coming year. I believe that Mr. Resnick should withdraw as a candidate in the Wilton Manners 2018 election. I will be supporting Justin Flippin as mayor and Scott Newton and Paul Rowley as city commissioners this November. I thank the city commission.
Thank you, Mr. Cuda. Up next, Maria Torres? I may have missed, read the name. Nope? All right, we'll move on, then. Matt Gill. Nope, you're good? All right. Rachel Putnam. Nope? All right. Ron Falk.
Good evening. Ron Falk, eight oh one, eighteen, Northeast Eighteenth Court, sorry, and also work at the lovely RE/MAX location down the street next door to Starbucks. I wrote a long, extensive note, so there's my scribbles, real quick. First off, I do want to give my strong support for the project across the street, five forty-nine Northeast Twenty-First, that way, because I'm pointing the wrong way. Whether it's fourteen, fifteen, or sixteen units, it'll be a great addition to the community. At the recent CANA meeting, the Central Area Neighborhood Association, the police chief spoke about the fact that we are five police officers short in this town, and it's because of whether it's legislation requirements of officers being at public schools or just hard to find people. It's a statewide problem, and I just hope it's not because of a lack of funding. I hope we have a fantastic police force, which is why it's nice to walk at two o'clock in the morning, walking the streets, and it's not even an issue. So I hope there's some way that we can do some better job recruiting. However, we can offer some types of long-term pension or something like that to get a, grow our police force. Elected government officials who came out, Commissioners Newton and Tom, Commissioners Green, I saw both the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and then especially, my last point is the event that was last night at Hunter's. Thank you for the people for sponsoring this event. The West Michigan Business Directory was, they had the release of this last night. There were two hundred business people there, the people who drive the community and hire the people and give good incomes and stuff like that. So thank you for both, everybody coming out and showing your support, and it was a great event. Get involved with business, support local business, and then, of course, congratulations to Vice Mayor Flippin for making the cover of the magazine this year. Did you get a copy?
I didn't know that, all right.
May I give you this?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I think I was like on page six.
Okay, all right, there you go.
That's it? Thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Great, my face is probably... Up next, I have Mr. Mike Camardella. You're good? All right, sir. Brad Nemeth.
Indecisive. Brad Nemeth, six one six, Northeast Twenty-second Drive, like the last times. I live on six one six, did I say that already, right? Okay. Yeah. So I want to apologize, I'm not privy to the most current plans that have been submitted on this, on five forty-nine revisions. I do understand our last meeting was, we were, eight flex units were voted on, and I've recently been shown a plan for fourteen units, and I'm a little bit confused on that. I'd like some clarity on that, and the plan I saw still left the intersection between Twenty-second Drive and Twenty-First Court, it looked like it still was moved in the southeast direction. So let's please review that and make sure that the residents still have, who live there now, still have some street parking, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. And just for the record, ladies and gentlemen, if, when we get to that point in the meeting that we discuss further that item that Mr. Nemeth just mentioned, you will be afforded the opportunity to be sworn in, as you were last time, sir, so that you can put your comments on the record and be part of that deliberation, okay? Very good. I have no one else on the sign-in list, but would anyone else like to speak? Oh, very good.
I'm Ken Stone, six twenty-one, Northeast Twenty-First Court. I did have a number, but somehow I got left off. Vice Mayor, and Commissioners, and city staff, and public at large, I would like to sit and talk for just a moment about change and change in our city. Change becomes inevitable, and we have to change and grow. I've sat through numerous planning and zoning meetings, I'm on the Economic Development Task Force, and I think in many ways, we have handcuffs around economic growth in our city. I have been clear on my opposition to the density of the project across on five forty-nine Northeast Twenty-First Court, not about townhouses or growth. I would like to suggest that we, as we're doing budgets, and I realize we're in last minute, I think we really need to put an accelerator on the, both zoning redo as well as the land use redo, and hold the accountability... as well as the land use redo, and hold the accountability and standards for all, and no, don't let independent developers or people move our city where it is not our city. I'm speaking simply as behalf of a citizen. I have no vested interest. I'm not running for office. I care about our city, and I think a lot of people care about our city. And I think it should be a priority. We have to grow. We missed the growth boom that the other cities around us have had, indeed, but we need the growth that's right for our city, not for other cities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak in public comment? All right, seeing none, we will close that portion of the agenda and move on to our consent agenda. Colleagues, are there any items that you wish to pull from our extensive consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, very good. Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Carson. Are there any objections? Seeing none, the motion carries, but the clerk will proceed with the roll call on the vote, please.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Carson?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to item nine, the lien reduction request. We have a request before us for a lien reduction. City manager, do you want to...
Sure, I'd be happy to, Mr. Vice Mayor. An applicant has requested a lien reduction for the property located at 20 through 100 East Oakland Park Boulevard. This particular property was issued a code violation, or code enforcement citation on April 10th, 2008, for remodeling work being done without permits. In May 2008, the special magistrate issued a daily fine in the amount of $150, which accrued for 159 days, until the property came into compliance. The total lien on the property of $23,875 was paid on April 16th, and the applicant is requesting a reduction and a refund of the applicable amount, and I believe we have the applicant here this evening.
Okay. Applicants, we appreciate you being here. We just asked your name and address for the record, and...
Tony and Terry Lurie, 12-100 East Oakland Park Boulevard.
Okay, and, uh, at this time, you, the floor is yours to present your case before us, and then we will probably follow up with some questions.
Yes, uh, the, uh, fine in question was actually incurred by one of our tenants. Uh, he evidently did some work which we were unaware of, and commenced with construction. The city then was, or flagged the job, uh, that's the first we had found out about it. And at that time, the tenant had, or pulled the permit and completed the job. We were only aware of the, the, the penalties and the, uh, the fees that were assessed when we, uh, did a lien search and tried to sell the property, uh, back about a month ago in 2018. So we had no communication with the city for 10-plus years while this lien was still clouding the title of the building. So we're appealing to the city and the commission to see if there's something we can do about this. The tenant, uh, you know, had indicated that they had closed the permit, and that was the last we had heard about it. That was back in 2008.
Okay, and you are obviously aware that the, the lien has been paid, but, to the city as well, so...
That is correct, yes. We have, we have satisfied the lien in full.
Okay. Colleagues, questions? Julie?
I, I do have several questions I hope you can help me with. You are not the owner of the property, is that correct?
We, well, we have recently sold the building. We were the property owners for over 15 years.
And you're not the owner now?
No, we're not.
And you put, the property was under contract?
Correct.
That's when the title exam was done, and you probably found out about the lien?
Correct.
Then you closed?
Correct.
And the lien was paid in full at, as a condition of the closing?
Well, we had the option of not closing and, and mitigating the lien reduction, or, or showing good faith to the city and getting it paid.
Okay, part of my concern is, uh, it is normal for us to have, uh, an owner of property coming in, someone who owns the property and has an interest in the property, coming in to mitigate, um, a fine. This is the first time I've ever had anyone who has sold the property and is coming back to the city wanting a refund of a lien that was paid, and I think you sold it in March?
That is correct.
March for...
April.
Okay, the, the deed's dated the 16th of March. I think it was recorded, uh, April 10th, and $2,375,000.
In discussing this with all council, both ours, as well as the buyers, as well as several individuals in the city, it was, it was advisable that we did settle, uh, this lien prior to closing. So there was no malice, and we did want to show good faith to the city.
Okay. Um, did the, does the current, did the current owner of the property authorize you, uh, in any way to, to request this?
Oh, absolutely not. No, this is, this is purely on our own condition.
Okay, and can you tell me again, I know that, uh, this started in 2008, you took possession, you, you bought the property in 2006. There were a host...
I believe it was 2003.
2003, and you've owned it through this period of time?
Correct.
Um, you didn't, your tenant didn't tell you, or you didn't find out about it?
The tenant never notified us, uh, of the work that they did, the construction that they did. Only when the city flagged or stopped the job was a city, excuse me, was a permit pulled, and the work was, or, or the permit was closed subsequently thereafter, within a very, very short period of time.
And the notices you received on behalf of the city because...
We did receive notice that, about the permitting, but we never received any notice that we can remember about the additional fines that were being accrued, or that the permit was actually closed.
No, we knew that the permit was closed.
Oh, you knew that?
No, we knew the permit was closed. We just never got any other notice, so when that permit closed, we thought everything was taken care of, until, well, in May, uh, March.
Of this year.
Of this year.
I appreciate the fact that you have a business here, and I appreciate your commitment to the city. I'm just reluctant to give a refund to somebody when they come back after the property has sold, um, requesting a refund for, uh, the reason that you just didn't know about it. And it's part of our diligence to make sure we know about our businesses, uh, so I would expect, as, as good property owners and landlords, that you would, you would do similar.
I do want to add one thing. We have owned property in the city since 1986, including this substantial property that was recently sold, along with a 72-unit apartment complex on Andrews Avenue, along with numerous houses and some other property. We have never once been flagged and/or cited by the city. Uh, we have always, uh, adhered to all code violations and have never paid one penalty or been assessed any penalties, uh, throughout our tenure of ownership in the city.
But, I'm sorry, one, one more, sir. There are roughly 20, uh, different code violations, uh, over 2013, 2014, 2015, 2016, and 2017. They're all closed.
They're all for occupational licenses.
Prohibited signs, graffiti, prohibited signs, unlicensed inoperable vehicle, prohibited signs, hard junk, prohibited signs, failure to obtain a business tax receipt, parking lot maintenance, failure to obtain a current business tax receipt, failure to obtain a current business tax receipt. So, you may not have been fined, but you certainly have been cited.
Those are mostly, 90% of those are tenant-related issues.
Okay, and your other properties, do you have any, uh, current violations?
Well, we, well, we had Camelot West Apartments, and that's, that's sold as well. Thank you.
You're good? Colleagues, anything else? Commissioner Green.
I just wanted to ask, uh, why the current owners would not be here or in touch with us?
They've been given free and clear titles, so technically, this is some things between us and, and the city.
Okay. All right. You have any staff to look? No, I, I think we're good. So, thank you very much. Are there any, uh, any motions on the floor or further deliberation from this commission on this lien request? Seeing no motions, um, it's been denied then. All right, but thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to board appointment resolutions. Resolution 2018-038. We have a number of board appoint applicants for the Planning and Zoning Board. So, let's see. Colleagues, I will just call them in the order that they are on our list, just noting that Mr. Kenny Silverman and Ms. Ruth Ann Stadnick have both withdrawn their applications for consideration. So, applicants, we'll call you forward, and, um, also just to, to note that we have a number of those that cannot attend, and that's on the second page of your voting sheet, colleagues, so that the notice has been given to all of us as to why those individuals may not be able to be here. So we'll start off first with Mr. Don Darmenio, and, uh, each, each individual will be given, um, three minutes to speak? Or two? Or two? Or less? Or less, if you choose. So...
Don Darmenio, 328 Northeast 20th Street. Um, I am currently serving on the Planning and Zoning Board. I am finishing up my first, uh, initial two-year term. So first of all, I'd like to thank each of you for, um, supporting me and, um, allowing me to serve on the board, and really entrusting me with, uh, such an important position in our city. Um, I will tell you, I do take it seriously. I recognize how important it is, and, um, I normally spend several hours reviewing all the required documentation, um, you know, before attending a meeting. And I also try to attend as many city meetings as I can. I go to, um, DRC meetings, pre-application meetings, of course, commission meetings, county meetings. I guess I should tell you, I've been a resident of Wilton Manners for the past 10 years. Um, just to give you a brief history, prior to that, I was employed as an accountant, uh, most recently by Scholastic. Um, I worked for Scholastic for 15 years, and I was their director of their state and local tax department. Prior to that, I worked for Verizon in a similar position, uh, for more than 10 years. And I can tell you, as an accountant, that, um, responsible economic growth is key for our city, not only to grow, but really, um, to support our ever-increasing, uh, city's operating budget. I was at a county meeting last week, and we got the results of our resident survey. Pam Landy gave that to us, thank you. And one of the things most important to many of our residents, including myself, is maintaining that small-town feel. So really, our challenge as a city is, um, supporting and encouraging, um, that responsible development without jeopardizing the integrity of our neighborhoods. So, I can tell you, um, I'm a resident, I've been here 10 years, I'm not going anywhere. I have no agenda for being on this commission, um, being on, I guess, on this board, other than that of a concerned citizen. I want to make sure that our neighborhoods are protected, that we do support responsible economic development, and that our code is adhered to. So, thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you, sir. Questions from the dais?
I don't have a question, I want to make a comment.
Sure.
Obviously, Commissioner Carson, he's attended meetings before. I was wondering who was going to go there, but...
No, 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 that wasn't the, the comment.
I started to ask, I said, "Wait a minute."
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I could tell you, I, I haven't missed one.
That's a good question.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to personally thank you for your effort in, uh, trying to reduce the density of, uh, development, uh, in the past, and, uh, your, uh, comments and pleas, uh, were not successful with your board, but, uh, again, thank you for that.
Well, thank you, I appreciate you acknowledging that, thank you. I mean, density is always important. We have to be careful with that, of course.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, Mr. Jeffrey Ferraro.
Good evening, Jeff Ferraro, 2209 Northeast 9th Avenue. Um, I have, uh, been a member of the Planning and Zoning Board since 2012, when I was first appointed. I was reappointed in 2014, and then reappointed again in 2016, but as an alternate. So this time around, I'd like to be reappointed, but as a member. Um, I've lived in the city since 2008, um, recently built a brand-new home, and, um, Commissioner Carson knows exactly where it's located. And, um, I currently work for the State of Florida, Department of Children and Families. Um, I've worked for them for almost 33 years, and in my current capacity, I serve as the contract administrator for the Departments Southern and Southeast Regions, which ranges from Indian River County in the north, all the way down to Monroe County in the south part of the state. And I manage about 16 contract managers, and of course, we're in charge of the family safety, substance abuse, mental health, um, adult protective services, child protective services, and the like. In turn, I'd like to be reappointed to the board. Um, as an alternate, I've not missed any of the meetings, and I have served in the capacity, when a member has been absent, and voted in a manner that I felt was appropriate to benefit the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the dais? No? All right. Thank you very kindly. All right. Moving right along, Mr. Van Goslin. Saw him earlier. There he is.
Good evening. Uh, Van Goslin, 417 Northwest 21st Court. Excuse me. Um, I have not been a member of this, uh, group. I am with the, uh, Advisory Board on Budget, but I'm particularly interested in the development of the city, and I think of that, I could contribute to it. I've been here since the previous century. I've been here 22 years. And actually, I started coming to this place before that, but it took me five years to get here, finally. Uh, excuse me. I'm not going anywhere, anywhere. Uh, I'm also retired. I used to be a journalist. I didn't write, I was an editor. And, uh, prior to that, before I came down here, I'm from Canada originally, and, uh, over there, I did, uh, human, human relations, labor, labor relations, but I found out that I couldn't do that here, because they didn't have labor laws, but that's another story. So I got into journalism. At any rate, what I want to contribute is, as a resident, I don't have, uh, postgraduate degrees. I'm very interested in, uh, urban planning, but, um, I think that I can contribute because I know this town. I come to a lot of meetings, a lot of them. So I think I'm aware of what's going on. Um, I speak to a lot of people, some of them I don't agree with, and a lot of them I don't agree with, but I like to hear what they have to say, because I find that they've changed my mind sometimes, which I think is a good thing. And I'm very much in favor of development. I think we need to increase our density. I think we need relief for the, for the residential property taxes, and the only way to achieve that is to expand our business, businesses here. And I really would like to participate in the development of this town. I don't have children. I, in a way, uh... In a way, this is my contribution. Anyway, and, and the answers? Any questions?
All right, thank you, sir. Questions from the dais? Commissioner Carson.
Van, have you attended Planning and Zoning Board meetings?
Oh, so, most of them. Let's put it that way. I've been attending those meetings for three years now, or whatever. I'm not sure how long. I also might add that I also have, uh, tried to develop a relationship with Roberta and Eve, and trying to learn more from them, from the professional side. I thought that using the professionalism that's already exists in the city, that when you're talking, asking, people are inquiring to the board, that we could rely on that expertise. Uh, I find that sometimes the board, I feel, that the board wastes a little bit of its time going over things which are pretty self-evident.
Anything else, colleagues? Thank you, Van, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving right along, Mr. Daniel Keister O'Mills. He is... Oh, he made it. Very good, Mr. Vice Chair, how are you?
Daniel Keister O'Mills. I had the city commission meeting at Pompano Beach and was able to make it this evening, so, um, I'm a principal planner with the city of Pompano Beach. I've been with the Wilton Drive Improvement District for a couple of years, and, um, sorry. Sorry. I obviously have an interest in planning. My background is education in urban planning, regional planning. So, you know, the types of applications that go through this board, zoning board appeals, variances, special exceptions, site plans, all those things I'm familiar with in my personal work, and would be interested in putting my two cents into the development and applications that come before the city.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the dais? Commissioner Carson?
My standard question is, have you attended Planning and Zoning Board meetings?
Yes. I have attended the last two Planning and Zoning Board meetings for the city. The two ago was actually canceled. There was no items on the agenda, or they actually adjourned because they didn't have any items, because something struck, anyway. And I also attended the meeting last night.
Before that, have you attended any in the past?
No, I have not attended these meetings in the city. I've attended lots of Planning and Zoning Board meetings and lots of Zoning Board of Appeals meetings in my own city, but not there.
I noticed on your application that you didn't think there would be a conflict. When are the City of Pompano Beach's commission meetings?
The City Commission meetings are the same nights as yours, Tuesdays and Thursdays. Though Planning and Zoning Board meetings, we don't have, we don't hold any meetings on Monday nights or Fridays. So the Planning and Zoning Board meetings that are the first Monday of the month, I believe, there's no conflict with our meeting schedules. Our Planning and Zoning Board meeting happens to be the fourth Thursday, fourth Wednesday of the month.
So no conflicts with SP and Z.
Unless they change it.
Unless they change it. At present, there's no conflict.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Green.
And again, a comment. The fact that you are a planner, I think we would be getting a valuable resource on planning and zoning without having to pay for it. And I appreciate that.
So, your attorney?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I just want to make sure that the applicant is aware of the fact that he would not be able to serve as both a board member of the Improvement District and also the Planning and Zoning Board.
Okay. That was going to be a question. So you're aware of that, and should you be appointed to this board, you're understanding that you would have to resign from...
Yep. I think that I would be more, although I have very much appreciated my time at the Wilton Drive Improvement District, I think that my efforts are better served on the Planning and Zoning Board.
Okay. Commissioner, did you have anything? You good?
I'm good.
All right. And Mr. Keister, I would just like to echo what Commissioner Green said. You are a city planner, and so your expertise would certainly be an asset to the Planning and Zoning Board. So I appreciate your involvement previously and currently on the Business Improvement District as the vice chair of that, and your willingness to continue that service on our own P and Z board is admirable and certainly worthy of notation. So thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along to Mr. Glenn Lawson, indicated that he cannot attend, but just want to make sure. We also have Mr. Roger Roa, who I did see earlier.
Hello, everyone. Roger Roa, 29... What's my new address? Hold on.
Janetta Isle, I know.
Yeah, Janetta Isles, 2935 Northwest 11th Terrace Street. Just moved recently. I've been a resident of the city since 2011, but besides before that, I've been involved with the city as a city employee back in 2001, '02, and '03. I've seen pretty much the city grow from, you know, from where it was and all of the bad that happened to now, how well it has flourished. I also am the director of development at the Pride Center. I fundraised over just a shiive of a million dollars to our, for our community. I work with lots of different businesses here in Wilton Drive and around Wilton Manners, and I also produce, you know, two of the largest events here in Wilton Manners. I've learned very much a lot about zoning and ordinances, and then some that I would like to admit, but I still have a lot to learn, I'll be honest. I'll be upfront. But I think, you know, that me being on this board will definitely help the city continue its growth, both economically and, you know, increase the residential here. So, questions?
Okay.
Yes, I have attended a meeting, two meetings, actually, for Planning and Zoning.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Carson?
You currently were just recently appointed to another board.
The Economic Development Task Force, yes.
Is there a conflict in serving in those two? City Attorney?
I'm sorry? He's on...
Economic Development Task Force.
The Economic Development Task Force would not constitute an office for purposes of the dual office holding prohibition.
Other questions? Mr. Green.
I wanted to find out perhaps why your interest in this board at this time?
Well, I'm a resident. You know, my ultimate goal is to be a commissioner, and I need to get involved in my, you know, community, and this would be a great opportunity for me to be, to do that.
Okay. The reason... It's fine with me.
Yeah.
I'll be upfront, everybody, yes. Exploratory committee for 2025, Roger Roa.
That was not the reason I asked. The reason I ask is you work for the Pride Center in a very important job, and the Pride Center is going to be talking with the city about development on its property. And that's where my concern comes up.
Well, during the vote, I could, you know, exclude myself from that vote should the Pride Center conflict of interest be.
Well, I get a little nervous when we have people connected with development, or perhaps development, applying for this board. You're not the only person I'm going to ask this of. So that was my concern.
Okay. Other questions? I'm good. No? All right. Thank you, Mr. Roa. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along, Mr. Richard Safaty cannot attend. Mr. Jeb Schaefer.
If, could I make a comment?
You certainly may.
I know Richard.
Yep.
He thought the meeting was going to be the last meeting, that this would happen, and he has already, and each commissioner has this information, he is attending an international trade show, and his hope of being there is to bring more tourism to Wilton Manners. And Julie, he has attended numerous meetings over numerous months.
Thank you, Mr. Green. All right. Mr. Jeb Schaefer.
Jeb Schaefer, 2260 Wilton Park Drive. I applied for this position last year, so I'm here again. I, my background is a little unusual. I started my post-college career as a computer analyst, worked for companies like IBM, did the corporate thing for a number of years, and then as I just learned that I really wasn't getting fulfilled with that, I moved into the area of construction, rehabilitation, you know, real estate-related enterprises. I currently have a very small micro company. It's just me. We mainly do remodels. You may know Dean Trent House's office. I've done that. I did the Remax office, but some of the A-quality office space here in Wilton Manners. And I applied for this position because it's my passion. I love anything that is, that we live in, that we work in. I love architecture. I love buildings. I have a passion for that. And I feel that I have something that the current committee could have a little more of, and that is a little more of a hands-on expertise on code, applications, floodplain zones, things that are just taken care of, that the current committee seems to spend quite a bit of time on that's not necessary because there's a lack of understanding of how a permit gets approved, the process it goes through, when it's going through the county, the rules that FEMA put upon it for elevation and flood. And I would like to maybe hopefully bring some knowledge to the committee in that respect. I have been to five meetings in the last year, and as far as a conflict of interest, I'm a little guy. I'm not building townhouses in this town, but I do have an understanding of construction, the processes, how things are supposed to occur. You know, a question came up last night with regards to how the demolition would occur to a certain property. You know, I understand that, you know, you may want to just demo part of it before you do others, just to expedite the construction process. But mainly, I'm really interested in being on this board because I love this town. I've lived in and around Wilton Manners since 1993, and really want to, you know, up my participation within the city.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the dais? Commissioner Green.
You mentioned it already, but again, when I saw mortgage broker and general contractor, that personally makes me nervous. So I think you've made some comments. Anything else you want to add, or...
The mortgage broker thing was a lifetime ago, and I wasn't that good at it. But again, I'm not... The interests I have, really, my business interests are not anything that's going to come before this board. It's really, you've been in Dean's office, you guys have been in Hunter's, it's, there's not going to be any zoning variances that are going to come from those, at least I don't think. And I really don't know how many more of those nice offices we're going to be building. I hope there's going to be more, but...
Other questions? Mr. Schaefer, as a fellow ICU graduate, I thank you very much for your continued interest in the city and, of course, this board as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Mr. Michael Soloa, excuse me.
Not here?
No? No, he's withdrawing. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the applicant is withdrawing. His...
No, he is withdrawing?
Yes.
Where did you hear that?
Right there, there he is, and he's indicating, sir, that you are withdrawing your... Okay. He is withdrawing. All right. So there you go. All right. And then last but not least, Mr. Brad Sterling, who cannot attend. He is actually in Europe at the moment, so.
And I just want to add, he is currently a member of the board and, again, has been there a lot.
Okay. All right. So colleagues, if you will, you've got your vote sheet, please do your numbers and pass them to the city manager for tallying, please. All right. So we're scoring one through nine.
One through nine.
One through nine, because there are three of these individuals on.
I'd just like to thank everyone for our application because this is one of the biggest boards we have, and it is the biggest board we have in this city, and it is huge compared just the same as what the City Commission does up here. It makes a huge difference in what goes on in our city, and I thank you for coming out. And if you aren't chosen, it's not because we don't want you, it's just we have really tonight, we have a very hard decision tonight, and it's a lot of very good applicants this time. So thank all of you for coming out.
And since there were so many, if someone does not make this board, I hope you'll apply for one of the other boards that we don't get as many applications for, and particularly things like the Wilton Drive Improvement District and things of that sort.
Absolutely. Ditto, Commissioner Green. It's great to see such an engaged citizenry in our city of folks that want to be involved in the decision-making process of Wilton Manners. So thank you all for your application.
Oh, God, I can't do that.
One through nine.
Nope. I know.
I'll stand with him and help him.
No coaching now, Commissioner.
I don't think she's supposed to look at this.
Probably not, so.
Carson?
You can look at mine. I don't care.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. Now that everyone's here.
You need a new one?
No. Just give me a moment.
You're fine. Just talk among yourselves for a moment.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be back with you momentarily. Brief intermission of sorts. Fantastic. And just for everybody's knowledge, this is an appointment for four positions on the board plus one alternate. So there will be five people appointed, one of those being the alternate, though.
Should we assume it would be the person that...
Comes in fifth?
Yeah.
I would.
That's a great assumption, Commissioner Green.
Yeah, it's not important.
Doing anything else tonight?
Maybe a couple things.
Do the Broward League of Cities while we're tallying up?
Oh, that's a great idea.
How about we pop over to new business, the appointment of the Broward League of Cities appointments with the director, alternate, and second alternate? Anybody want to chime in and make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for Tom Green.
To be director?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we knew he'll be here for the next year.
Does the mayor have to serve as director?
No. The mayor's a past president, so he serves. He's the past president, and he, he is the treasurer, and so he's continuing in that position. And he's not the delegate now.
Correct.
The person that is, is the vice mayor, and I suggest he would make a better choice than I would.
I change it then to have Vice Mayor Flippin', and second alternate be Tom Green.
Okay.
Or first alternate.
First alternate, Commissioner Green, and second alternate...
Julie Carson.
Okay.
So that was your way of getting out of doing any of these?
Yeah.
Scott makes the motion. Is there a second to that effect?
Bring me a feedback. That's...
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion does carry, but would the clerk please do the roll call for the vote?
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Carson?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Yes.
That way you can eat more frozen chicken at these meetings.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, our four appointees to the board are Mr. Don... Yes, I see. One, two, and three. Oh, I see what we get. Okay. My apologies. All right. So the three for certain appointees are Don Darmenio, Daniel Keister O'Mills, and Brad Sterling. Mr. Richard Safaty and Jeb Schaefer each tied at 17, so I might suggest that we make one the alternate and the other the appointee since, unless you want to vote again on board appointee and alternate, and we can do that, too. So you have, you have two options, colleagues. I'm willing to entertain.
They're tied, so...
They're tied, so...
We have to decide...
Decide which one's going to be the full member, which one would be the alternate.
And what were the names?
And those two would be Richard Safaty and Jeb Schaefer are the tied for fourth. So someone needs to be the fourth appointee, and then someone else needs to be the fifth appointee, which would be the alternate.
Well...
Any motions? Commissioner Green?
Yeah, because I know Richard. I would like to make a motion that he be the regular member.
Fourth member.
Okay. So how about we do the three that I mentioned, and Richard Safaty the fourth, with Mr. Jeb Schaefer the fifth? So that is your motion on the resolution in total. Correct, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to that effect?
And the fifth is the alternate?
The fifth being the alternate, Mr. Jeb Schaefer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carson. Any objections or discussion? Seeing none, the motion does carry, but let's proceed through the roll call on the vote on that appointment.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Carson?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Yes.
So congratulations, appointees and alternate. So, very good. Moving right along.
Oh, yeah, Sunshine.
Oh, just as the general mentioned, any appointee to any of our boards, you will go through Sunshine Training if you haven't already done so in other capacities. sunshine training if you haven't already done so in other capacities, which basically just means that you are not permitted under Florida law to contact and communicate with your fellow board members on items that are or could potentially come before your particular board or body. So, exercise caution is what my advice from this dais would be, because that's what we do up here. So, you should do so amongst yourselves. But you will receive your requisite training to be properly schooled in what the sunshine law means to each of you.
And however, any of you can discuss anything with anyone on the commission.
Correct.
And you can discuss something with anyone on any other board. It's just not on your board.
Just amongst yourselves.
Ethics training, too.
All right.
Unless it's going to come to us, then it's not advisable.
Do the PNC folks go through ethics training?
Yes.
Mr. Attorney? Ethics training as well? They do that? Yeah, okay.
Is that true that if something might be coming to us, they shouldn't talk to us after their meeting, right?
Well, you don't, it's not, you can't, it's just. It gets to be complicated and sensitive, especially when you're dealing with a quasi-judicial item. But there are ways to deal with that by disclosing the conflict at the commission level.
All right. Let's move along into public hearings. Our first item is ordinance 2018-008. Would the clerk please read the item?
You're not doing another presentation, are you?
An ordinance of the City of Wilton Manors, Florida, amending Chapter 10 of the Code of Ordinances by adding Article 14, titled Special Events Permit Procedure, providing for permit requirements, providing for standards, guidelines, and review criteria, providing for denial of a special event permit, providing for conditions for granting a special event permit, providing for a special event contract and city service fees, providing for police, fire, rescue, and emergency medical services, providing for appeal of permit applications, providing for violation of regulations and code enforcement jurisdiction, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
All right. So, to bring it before us, is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Carson, second by Commissioner Newton. All right. Do we want to turn it over to staff for a moment, or do we want to proceed with discussions and questions? This is the second reading. So, actually, at second reading, Mr. Attorney, I do need to afford the public, don't I?
There is a public hearing. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, let's go ahead and open it up for the public first. If any member of the public would wish to come and speak to us on this particular proposed ordinance, you may do so at this time. As we do in public comment, at the beginning of every meeting, we ask that your name and address be provided for the record. Matt Dash? Yes, Mr. Rowley.
Paul Rowley, 2016, Northeast 6 Terrace. I support, just want to say that I'm supportive of the public ordinance for special events. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that portion of this and turn it back over to staff or the commission for questions.
If I can, actually, from first reading, there was four items that staff did want to identify, that there were concerns that were raised. The first, there was a request to eliminate two words, permit processing from Section 10-313, subsection 1A, that was completed. There's also a question regarding a special event permit fee, as well as the block party fee. And there was also a question raised regarding penalties for violation of these regulations. So, again, the first item, we did eliminate that verbiage. The second, there is an existing permit fee and the leisure services fee schedule to address the processing. Block party fees is a no cost, because that is more geared towards our residents, as well as the penalties for violations. Those are existing in our code and other sections. We currently have three avenues in which they are addressed through the special magistrate. An individual can be fined up to $5,000 or imprisonment. So, if you have any other questions, of the ordinance itself, staff's here to answer any questions that you may have. Or I can do a full presentation.
I'm fine without the full presentation, unless my colleagues would direct otherwise, then I defer to them. But colleagues, questions? Commissioner Newton, I see you with a finger up. No? Okay, you're good. Commissioner Carson?
On the accompanying fee schedule, did you mark the changes since?
I'm going to defer to Director, Leisure Services Director Patrick Hahn.
I looked through them. I just didn't see if they were, the changes were marked.
If I may, Commissioner Carson, the fee schedule hasn't been changed. That's what was, has already been adopted prior to this ordinance.
Okay. So, the block parties aren't even on there yet?
And we will not be charging a block party fee?
I think I'm okay. I think the city manager answered, there are no fees, so, for a block party. I want to get back to the block party issue. If there are no fees, a permit is still required. That, I guess, includes the city. We've recently been having some block parties, city block parties. Would the city have to get a permit for those block parties?
Ms. Moore, why don't you chime in?
I'm looking at the city attorney, so, but I'm not, I'm not getting any answer from him yet.
Correct. We didn't exempt ourselves from our own ordinance.
What has been the practice in the past? I mean, it's not anything that I've looked at previously. Has it fit the practice of the city to obtain a permit for its own block party?
Sorry. Sorry.
No.
No. No, it has not.
But we just started having them more regularly since, you know, this past year when we had the, we've had three already, block parties?
So, what's your question? Again, it's up to the commission. If the commission wants to require it.
No.
No.
Oh, okay.
We can't do it right. We have a real problem trying to tell somebody else to do it right, so.
Well, that's my only issue with consistency. If we're not going to do it ourselves, then...
We are.
Well, that means we have to get a permit.
No, no, no. We don't need a permit, but, I mean, like I said, if we don't do it right in the first place, how do you expect somebody else to? I just, you can't, I just think it's silly that it's going to take time from our employees to do something that really is not necessary, I think.
Well, I tend to agree with you, but my question still is, you're saying, you're saying we have to have a permit or we don't, because everybody else is going to have to.
Exactly. Like, we can put signs up in the middle of media where we're going to have an event for the city, but everybody else can't do it. So, you're going to say now, we can't do that now either? So, I mean, it's just, I just think it's silly, I mean, just my own opinion, to say that we would have to get a permit for our own city to do an event. I mean, it's because make sure to everyone else that doesn't know the permitting process or how we do things, to make sure they do it properly and safely. We already know how to do that, I hope, because we set the process.
So, here's my leading question to staff, then. Wouldn't we follow our own adopted ordinance relative to practicing where we would put signs up, the same way we would expect an applicant to do so? We wouldn't put signs up where we wouldn't permit an applicant not to do so, right?
Correct. We would do that. And our block parties are a little different also. They're special events, and so we're really putting on a special event.
All right. Commissioner Carson, you have the floor.
Yet, we still have to get a permit. And let me address, on the definition of block party, it's a, a block party is, this is on page 170 of 373, a block party is a party or event hosted by multiple homeowners. So, one homeowner or two homeowners can't host a block party. You have to have two or more than two, based on this ordinance. And is there a re, I guess, what if I want to host a block party? And I want to get a permit to host a block party, and it's only me, well...
But it's not a block party. It's your own party.
Yeah, you're just having a party in the street.
Well, the intention would be to have a block party.
Well, then you hear neighbors are joining, and you're going to have one.
Well, why don't, why can't it just be hosted by a homeowner?
Because then you could have it at your house. That's why it's called a block party, because you have your neighbors that help you, well, whatever.
So, two, I mean...
So, your understanding, Commissioner Carson, is that if two homeowners get together and want to do anything, that they are going to fall under the definition of block party? Potentially.
Potentially, yes, but they would not be allowed, because it's multiple, and multiple is more than two.
Okay, so, three or more, basically.
Three or more, right.
So, that's your understanding. So, if three or more homeowners get together and want to do something, they're going to fall under the block party definition?
And they would have, all three of them would have to go in and get the permit and complete the application for that permit?
I believe the application can be submitted by a person.
One person.
Yes, one person. It's line 22 of page 14.
Line 22 of page 14.
Oh, any person, firm, group, including other type, seeking to conduct, shall file a complete.
Right. Right.
One of them could come forward.
Right.
Should I assume National Night Out would not be required to do this?
Ms. Moore, what do you think? Is that the intent of this ordinance?
We're going to exempt it.
Exempt National Night Out?
No, I don't think so.
Why not?
You close streets? Are streets closed?
Sometimes.
Depends how many homes get together and do things, so.
It would still be required to obtain a block party permit.
So, they would have to go through the process?
Yes.
Okay. There's the answer to that question.
We're going to exempt them, though, if you want.
That's an alternative.
And it has to be done 30 days prior.
I have an issue with you complaining about everything.
Commissioner Carson, do you have any additional questions? You're struggling with a couple items, I feel.
Did you, the block, the block party part gives me, I'm not comfortable with it.
Yeah.
And I'm not comfortable, maybe because I don't understand it fully, but what are, what do other cities do, like our size or not? Do they have block party permits?
Some cities call it different names. A review is typically all done very similar to what we are proposing. We are proposing a no fee for a block party, where some other cities may also require a fee for any type of review.
And it goes to the city manager's office?
Correct.
And then it has to be reviewed by the block party committee?
Correct.
City manager, police department, community development services, fire prevention, emergency management. I just think it's really onerous, so I don't particularly care for the block party permit. And I just, can you tell me what you think would be the important benefit of this in our city?
We actually are currently doing a block party permit process. So, what we're looking to do right now is just codify that process that we're currently utilizing.
Didn't know that.
I agree. I agree. I think it's, I wouldn't have said onerous, but I think we should not make this difficult for people to get involved in their community, particularly with the National Night Out. And we don't have a lot of block parties. The city has encouraged them, so I don't want to make it, anything that makes it more difficult.
And if I may add a little bit to this, as Ms. Moore mentioned, we currently do have a block party permit process. It's very similar to what is being proposed in the ordinance. And it's more of a review and a sign-off. And what we need to do is, we need to ensure that, you know, a road is being closed, so there are a couple of things we need to ensure. One, that the people that are in the road are safe. And oftentimes, that involves them borrowing barricades or cones from the city, so that they can properly close the roadway. Occasionally, we need to change traffic patterns with a maintenance of traffic plan. Our police department and our fire departments, for their emergency response, need to know ahead of time if a road within a neighborhood is closed. So, that's the intent of the block party review process, and it's something that we are already doing.
Commissioner Newton, do you have any comments? Because I have some on this, but I don't want to chime in unless all of you have chimed in appropriately. From, again, from a public safety standpoint, and Madam Manager, you hit on it, but I'd like our police department to pop in here, if I could. Like my colleagues, we don't want to inhibit our neighbors being able to congregate and have events. But I also am cognizant of the issue of public safety. And God forbid something were to happen, and this commission didn't have a process in place, so that PD, EMS could properly be assessing the situation on a road, that would really, that would be a bad thing to have happen. So, from a police-public safety perspective, would you say that there's any way to streamline the, it's been used onerous process that's been codified with this proposed ordinance, particularly relative to this provision? And I'd be open to hearing any suggestions. Or do you feel that it is pretty simplistic in nature for the overall purpose?
Gary Blocker, Assistant Chief of your Police Department, as Madam Manager said, she is absolutely correct. And to have this process in place is needed to ensure public safety, to ensure that we have any mechanisms that we need in place to protect those attendees at these events, to also have the communication with the other public safety agencies, so we're aware of it.
Fair enough.
I believe the process that we have in place is very simple, and it's even very simple for staff upon our review.
All right. And colleagues, my only continued thought would be, is that this process is already in place. We, as the policymakers of this city, are basically codifying that process and approving the process that our city staff has operated under. I'm open to suggestions from all of you relative to ideas on streamlining, if you identify them in here. But I would, I would not, I would hate to see us not adopt something relative to this. So, Commissioner Green?
I just would like to ask, does the current method require three people to come in and fill out something? Or does one person suffice?
Commissioner Green, I think staff could clarify that, because I believe only one person is required per the codification.
Well, and that's different from...
From the current practice, Madam Manager?
No, no. It's different from what's being proposed, isn't it?
We're wondering.
No.
An application currently can be submitted by one person. Under the proposed ordinance, one person can.
Okay. But now, the proposed ordinance, is that the same?
Yes.
Or is it, why were we talking about three people earlier?
Because I believe there was misunderstanding on the dais.
Yeah, maybe more than two.
No, there wasn't. Thank you. It was a misunderstanding. I need clarification.
Okay. Other questions relative to the ordinance, further discussion?
You said you had many. Are you?
No, I'm done with mine. Commissioner Carson, go ahead.
So, if, if several people get together and have a block party, or let's call it a block party, and no streets are closed, then no permit is required, because the definition of block party specifically requires the blocking of a public street. That's on line 17.
Ma'am, you are correct.
Okay. Well, that does give me a little bit, because, I mean, a lot of, even our city block parties, we have not blocked the streets. So, okay, I'm okay with that, then. I can deal with the multiple homeowners, but I don't know why it has to be multiple homeowners. One homeowner has a block party. Sure. I am also concerned about the city and how that will affect us, if it's not going to, everybody's, so I don't know if we want to consider, I don't think Commissioner Newton wants to consider cutting, exempting the city from block party permits or city-related events, but we have to keep in mind that we'd have to do everything 30 days in advance of the required event, and go through the process like everyone else. Those are my concerns with everything else. I'm comfortable with. I just had problems with that section.
Colleagues?
Well, the only thing I think about the block party, you say you want just one person. What if somebody in your block decides to have a block party, and it's just their friends, and nobody else on the street is allowed to go? And then you have a few, because it doesn't really say how many you can have. That would be kind of irritating, but how you turn them down if they have all the information you need to have one? So, if you have more than two, that means your block is having a party. That's why it's called a block party. I just worry about one person doing it, you know what I mean? It could be, it could disrupt the neighborhood, I think.
And one other question. It has to be a homeowner. It cannot be a renter. So, currently, if you're a renter and you want to have a block party, you would not be a... So currently, if you're a renter and you want to have a block party, you would not be allowed to do so, you have to own your home to do it.
Is that a question for me?
Well, that's, that's something I don't...
My, my opinion would be that you can't differentiate between a renter and a homeowner. That would be my opinion.
But if the ordinance says homeowner, then I would like to at least clarify it. Resident?
You're just saying you cannot do that.
Or...
Probably it's in the ordinance.
No, right now, it just says multiple homeowners.
So you put resident, yeah.
Residents.
Yeah.
Change homeowners to residents, I think, again, that would...
Correct.
Is that okay?
From a legal perspective, I, I think that would be more appropriate.
Yeah. Do you want to make a friendly?
Yes, I'd like to make a friendly motion that the word homeowners on line fourteen be changed to residence, plural.
Okay.
Multiple residents.
Page fourteen of nineteen of the proposed ordinance, okay?
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll acknowledge that without objection unless my colleagues do want to object. Nope, all right, so, so incorporate it to the motion.
And in the event that the word homeowners is somewhere else in this ordinance, I don't know that it is. But if it is, I would like to at least...
I will check that.
Do a quick search.
Yeah.
All right. Also incorporated without objection. Further discussion, colleagues? I think we're good, Commissioner Carson, are you good? All right, so let's call it. Would the clerk please move to the vote?
Commissioner Carson?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Yes.
As amended.
All right, as amended, yes. All right, moving on to resolutions. Resolution twenty-eighteen zero four five, would the clerk please read the item?
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Walton Manners, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials of the City of Walton Manners to execute a developers' agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants with Five Five Zero East LLC and Hammerhead Aquatics, Inc., pertaining to the property located at Five Five Zero East Oakland Park Boulevard, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Are there any motions on the floor relative to this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
By Commissioner Carson, second by Commissioner Newton. Staff want to make a presentation, or we just want to go into discussion by the commission? All right, colleagues, do you have any discussion or question on the item?
I'd like to listen to the applicant.
You want the applicant to come forward with the presentation?
Because I think we all, we all, we all had a discussion with them, I don't know if you did, Vice Mayor, but the rest of us, I believe, met with them.
All right, very good.
And some of the changes I thought would be in there or not, so I just want to see, want to clarify what they are coming here right now with.
Okay, all right. Name an, name an address for the record, please.
Mall Kissinger, actually, it's fifteen twelve East Broward Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Suite one-ten. And I'm a principal at EDSA, I'm representing the applicant, as a landscape architect. So Commissioner Newton, when we, when we discussed the, the issue related to the noise and the idea of the screen in my conversations with, with the city attorney, when the city attorney drafted the developers' agreement, I listed out the items that were discussed and sent it to the, to the city attorney. And the city attorney and I had a conversation, and in speaking about the noise ordinance, the city attorney indicated that instead of putting a, anything stronger into the developers' agreement, which is, which was brought up at another meeting, or to have, to require anything different than what the current ordinance is, he just said, we have to follow the ordinance. And if the city decides to change the ordinance, then we would have to follow that as well. So that's why the specifics of the screen and the planting was not included in the developers' agreement related to the noise, for noise abatement, because bottom line is, we have to follow the noise ordinance.
But not yet.
Pardon me?
It may not be in there yet.
Well, it may not be there in there yet, and that would be, we would still have to go through building permits, as you know. This is for just entitlements. But, I mean, I think, I speak for the applicant, if that is something that, that we would need to put in, was a wood screen with louvers and some plants and pots to help create a screen or a little bit of a buffer on that roof deck, we have no issues with that.
Thanks, sir. Questions for the other from this? Commissioner Carson?
Could you, if you would, address parking, because that was one of the matters that the mayor brought up at the last meeting?
Sure. As this is, the site is currently light industrial, and it was, it was actually used for a commercial site for the former Goodwill. And the building is, is, I think was built in the sixties. The site is unique in its configuration with respect to its width and its length, as well as its access to Oakland Park Boulevard. And the building is situated not exactly in the middle. And so unfortunately, when we went through the due diligence, there is a lot of pavement around the structure itself. So there were a number of cars that could park there, but the spaces were not designed to code, meaning they weren't nine feet wide by eighteen feet long. And the drive aisles weren't necessarily what met code either. So unfortunately, because of the mathematics of the site, with the building in the middle, we simply do not have enough room from the west side of the building to the west property line to do the most efficient parking, which would be backout parking, which would be ninety-degree parking on both sides of a drive aisle, because there's literally just not enough room to do that. So we were put in as much parking as would, much, as much legal parking, meaning parking that's to code, that would actually fit onto the site, hence the reason for the request for variances at planning and zoning for the, the parking, and then also looking at the landscape buffers. The other thing related to the parking is that, in discussions with staff, we were first discussing a text amendment to the light industrial. We then thought that rezoning to B-three was a more appropriate way to do it, because there is a, a classification or land use called athletic instruction. Athletic instruction is not exactly what an aquatic, aquatic club is related to the kinds of uses, because we're, we're putting a pool in a building is what we're doing. So it's not that the entire space within the building is like a gym floor, where you could pack a lot of people into it. So the athletic instruction is, is really the closest that staff and the applicant could come up with that would meet the ability to do this pool. The parking requirement for athletic instruction is way in excess, it's a hundred and forty-four spaces. We would literally have to knock the building down, and we still couldn't get all the parking spaces in there. And so really, what happens is then, we can't do anything there. And so I think the greater good for the city is to redevelop that site and, into this use with aquatic membership, aquatic club. So that's why the, there is, there's the most parking that we could get in that dimensionally fit, and were legal spaces.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything additional?
Commissioner, if you don't mind, I know, but it's on that same...
All right, Commissioner.
On the parking, I don't think anybody in this commission is worried about swimming during the day, and even at night sometimes, when there's no executive parties or there's no swim meet. I think that's, I'm hoping that's what the rest of this commission feels, that's when we're really worried about the...
Special events.
Right. And I'd like to know, where are you putting that parking? I want to hear they're being bussed in, they're going to ride their motorcycle or their skateboard. I mean, you really got to, if you're having a, a nice meet, which I believe you're going to have one of the nicest places in probably the tri-county area almost, to have a swim meet, because it's indoors. So you're going to pack a lot of people in there, or you should, I hope you do. But we need to know safely where you're going to go, because I don't want to hear after you open up and you guys are doing great, that everybody's starting to park down the side streets and people's yards and all that thing. So I, there's got to be somewhere you, you have to have signed up, like some of the business on Walton Drive, they have other places to have, they like parking, or a spot to go to, and they have people drive back and forth. And that's what worries me. It's not the swimming, the day-to-day swimming, because that doesn't make any noise at all. I mean, I get it, and it's only be a few cars at a time, even if it was thirty people swimming in the pool, I get that, it's not going to be noisy, or the parking problem. But that's the issue that I have. Where, where are they going to get the parking spots, or where are they going to park in these events?
They're going to park where they're, and I don't mean to sound flight here, but they're going to park where they legally are able to park. So, and we, we can't dictate what somebody is going to do with related, related to a special event. However, I will say that the kind of special event that is intended to be there, if we have a children's swim meet or a youth's swim meet, there will be, because there is a limited amount of parking, carpooling that is going to happen. If we, and I know you didn't want to hear, carpooling, buses, skateboards, and bikes, but the reality of it is, there will certainly be carpooling at one point. There has been, we've not had any formal discussions with any of the business owners that have more parking, because we don't have a project yet. So it's really premature to have those conversations. I do know that the, the, the number of special events is going to be the exception and not the rule. And for the site to be successful, we will have to work that out. So if, if we can't work that out, then we're not going to have successful events. So, I mean, so that is something, once we get the entitlements and get the building permit and have it constructed, and then decide when we might have a special event, we're going to have to figure that out, because it won't be a successful event. We want these to be successful events. We've had some conversations with Walmart, but again, we don't have a project yet.
Right, right.
So, so we are, I, I guess I can assure you that we are thinking about this.
Okay, at least you're talking to somebody. Before, there was no talk about anything, it was just, oh, don't worry, they'll get there, they won't be a problem. And I'm going to make sure there's some kind of communication.
We heard you loud and clear.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
Other questions? Commissioner Green?
Yes, that's, that's my big concern. I think I've indicated to you that I'm willing to go with some things that I think are minor. I'm still concerned about the wall, and I'm still concerned about parking. And, you know, we live in Walton Manners. What's the number-one thing we hear daily in Walton Manners? Parking. And again, if you were missing twelve spaces, I can understand. If you were missing fifty, but when it's this much, I just, I, people are going to be parking all down the street. I guess when they're towed a couple of times, they'll stop, but I don't know, that, the, the parking just seems very difficult.
Well, part, if I may, part of what our discussion was, and what I presented earlier, is the athletic instruction land use is not, is... It's the most appropriate land use that you have in your code, which has a parking requirement that comes with it. It is not, in my opinion, the most appropriate parking requirement for what we're trying to do as relates to an aquatic swim club. But the reason I bring that up is, if you look at the Swimming Hall of Fame in Fort Lauderdale, they have three pools, a dive well, and they have stands that will hold a few thousand people, and there's a hundred and six parking spaces. Now granted, there are other parking spaces that are certainly around that, but that use specifically has a hundred and six. So when they have big meets, they're, they have to do the same thing that we would have to do, is to make accommodations for parking and figure that out. They have more choices unfortunately in Fort Lauderdale than we do in Walton Manners, but the process would be the same. We would have to work out parking for the event, or, again, the events aren't going to be successful, and people aren't going to come. We, we can't dictate human behavior where they might park, but I think you're absolutely right. If they get a ticket, if they get towed, they're not going to do it again. So, so, I mean, that's, that's the, well, we hope they don't do it again. But that, based on the configuration of the site, and I think the desire, from what we understood from staff, to redevelop the site, this is, this is literally the best that we can do as it relates to parking and still have landscape. You, you made an indication about the fence, you still had some concerns about the fence, if I could, if I could address that as well. One of the things that, that we have done since the planning and zoning meeting and are in the application is that we have, per the code, we are supposed to notify neighbors of our intentions related to the perimeter, which is an alternate to, alternate screening is allowed as compared to a masonry fence. We took it a step further and asked the residents that are to the west and to the south, which those are the ones that are within that three-hundred-foot bubble, if a wood fence with the landscaping that we proposed would be appropriate. And we have gotten letters that are signed and notarized from each of the neighborhood associations or condo associations to the west and to the south that are saying they do not want a masonry wall, they want, they want the wood fence, because they feel that is a better for what they would like to do in their properties, which is, some of them want to, as we mentioned in one of the meetings, hang some things up on the backside of the fence. The fence has been built, it's been permitted through the city, and the permit has been actually signed off. And so since the neighbor, if the neighbors did not want the wood fence, we'd have a different conversation. But since it's allowable by code and we have those letters to support, we feel that's an appropriate ask. Yes, Commissioner?
Thanks. Before we go on, just for the record, and I'll call on the other commissioners, I just want, for the record, that I arrived just about nine-ten. And I'm sorry, everybody, I was late. I, in my other full-time job, as an attorney, I had an item on the Pompano Beach agenda, and just got done with it and came here. So, but I'm glad I was here for your item. So, Commissioner Newton?
Sure. I take my job seriously, and I, I look into things when I see that there's some problems. So today, I went over to a couple of those associations. And I sat in the parking lot as people came in, I talked to them just to make sure, they knew what was going on. Most of them knew that there was a swim school that was trying to come in there, and some of the things were going on there. The first person gentleman I talked to said that the board voted without even having a meeting, they did it on their own, the board. They'd even asked the rest of the, the owners to even be at the meeting. So when you say that they have signatures from, and I don't mean you, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, I know.
It's the board, which is wrong. I mean, I don't, listen, they should have gone to everyone. And that bothered me right away. And he goes, are we going to have more noise like we do at, at the, the bar that's around the corner? And I said, it shouldn't be like that, but they will have an opening on the, on the west side. And then another gentleman came up and drove in, I asked him, and he said that the board does whatever they want, and they didn't hear anything about this till the letter was already sent to them. So it bothers me that, you know, the one gentleman that came in with the letter, the one time said it was a hundred percent that everyone was for it. Well, they're not. But three of the people I talked to today said they want the wall, they do not want the wooden fence. So I'm not saying no about the wooden fence, I'm just saying, all of a sudden, I go there today, and the first three people I talked to, they want the wall and not the fence. So that, that really gives me some concern. And so I'm, I'm really going to, might be a stickler in this part. The only thing I might do to, to help and alleviate, because it's an expensive thing to do here, I mean, I get that part. And I would be willing to maybe give a few years to actually, you know, so you can get up and running, and then build the wall, leave the fence for now. But I believe the planning and zoning did a job, and the one thing they stuck on was that you must have the wall, and they gave you nine others, I believe, that they changed for you. So I'd like to see that happen, but I would, I wouldn't mind giving the owner some time to change that. But by saying that everybody wants it, it is absolutely not true, because I heard it from their mouths to my ears, so it's not like somebody else.
No, I understand, I addressed that. I guess, you know, as, as a landscape architect and design consultant, you know, we, like, we can't dictate how people behave as it relates to parking. It is my understanding, because we went through the process to figure out how to get feedback from the, the two buildings. And, and one building is managed by a property management company, and another building has their, has a board. And we reached out to, to those individuals, which we assumed, which we were told is the best way to get the information, because it's a...
I don't, you understand, I'm not saying it's your fault.
No, no, I know that, I know that, but what I'm saying is, is that we, I can't control how those buildings operate and manage the opinions of those, the people that live there. I, I do know that, that as a property management and as condo rules, they dictate the rules. And so if there are residents that don't necessarily... And so, if there are residents that don't necessarily like those rules, then they have a choice to do what they would like to do, whether stay there or leave. So, all I'm saying is that you, I'm sure you spoke to two or three people and you got different opinions, but the, the way it was described to us is that they had made a statement regarding their support. So, that, that's all I can say.
Right, no, I mean, I get it, but I was told by one person, the only ones that are on that one list that signed it was only the board members and there was no meeting of anyone else in that. So, that's the only thing that worried me.
Okay.
And I'm telling you right now, I just upfront that if the wall won't be built in a few years, which I, if the rest of the commissioner are going to go for it, but I'll be able to help, I mean, I don't mind helping out to, because I know it's expensive what he wants to do.
It's very expensive.
I mean, I get it. Yeah, I get it, but still, we can demand it right now. I wouldn't mind giving you time to do it. But I believe, to what planning and zoning did, with everything they gave you, not you, but the owner, that this one should stay. And what I've learned today by going over there and talking to residents, I believe it needs to stay. So, I tell you right now, I will vote no if the wall is not going to be there when it, project is done or within a certain time limit that you'll have to get the funds together to make the wall.
I have a, I guess I have a question, and I, and I understand that you spoke to two or three, but the, but the, the board members are, there's more than two or three members in each one of those boards because there's actually two buildings.
I agree.
So, did you speak to both buildings or just residents from one building?
Well, let me tell you what, I'm, I'm talking about the P and Z was the only one they said you must keep is the wall. Okay? So, I'm go, that gives a lot of weight to me to begin with. We put good people in that board and they spent a lot of time, went through a lot of thought, and even when it was done, I thought it was a great idea they kept that wall. We put that in there for a reason, and if it was a non-noisy at-all place you're going to put in there, then I'd say I could consider it. But it's not. It will make noise.
But we still have to...
There's no doubt that sometimes you will make noise, and that's what the wall is for. So, you know, I'm just telling you how my, I feel and that...
Understand.
If you don't like, I get it, but I'm sorry, but you're a great guy.
I'm just trying to convince you.
Enjoy your conversation with your great, but, you know, I'm looking at it for my residents and that's what I have to do.
Before we, let's go to Commissioner Carson before we...
Thank you. Because I don't believe the city clerk has a copy of all of the letters that were presented, I believe I have a complete copy of the letters signed for various complexes and I want to make sure those are...
You all got that.
Yep, they're all...
Let's put them in the record.
Please put them in the record so that we'll have those.
Yeah, I can give this to the clerk or the one I sent. Yeah, go ahead, Julie.
Yeah, they were part of the application, so...
Well, when I was speaking earlier with a couple of people with staff, they weren't familiar with those, so I wanted to make sure they were in the record and doesn't hurt for them to be in there twice.
Doesn't that at all?
What...
Not at all.
One of the things that I have said all along, that I really stand by what planning and zoning wanted, and out of all of the variances, this was the only one that they failed to approve. However, I also know that there is a section in the code which you took advantage of, which allowed for assuming that different homeowners and management companies and owners of property are going to follow the rules when they provide you a letter of support. And I'm not going to, I don't think the requirement is for every person to be in support of the fence. The requirement is for the surrounding neighbors in their respective capacities to provide a letter of support or denial.
Actually, just to be notified.
To be notified, but you had...
Not even, we went that step further to get the letter of support and what the code allows for is alternate screening.
So, I was initially completely going to, I just wanted the wall. I've seen too many places and other swim schools where even a wall with extra barrier and extra noise protection didn't satisfy residents. I believe that I would support this in the absence of a wall. I like the possibility of one being built later, but I'm also looking back to the fact that you provided support. If you violate the noise ordinance, you will be cited, and if it becomes a repetitive thing, then you'll be cited a number of times and you'll go before the magistrate and you will have to pay fines until such time as you're not cited. We still have that option, but I want this project to continue, so I'm leaning more towards the developer's agreement and relying on our own thoughtful code enforcement to keep the noise down.
I appreciate that. Part of what the discussion was with the city attorney was, and it was a very frank conversation with respect to a developer's agreement in order to try to move the project forward without going through appeals and such. And so, part of what we were able to do, I thought, very quickly and very easily, was to come up with a series of compromises and, and candidly, probably more compromises on our part than the city's part in order to, the project to move forward. We've been working at this for quite some time, certainly. So, that in the developer's agreement, you know, we're, we're holding the applicant to a higher standard than what the code says with respect to B3. That works out well because the contract that he has signed with the landowner does not allow him to do that anyway. But putting a...
I don't want to cut you off, but can you just summarize the conditions that you've agreed to with respect to the developer agreement?
Yes, sure.
Including, like, I was going to ask you specifically about the hours of operation. And I know that you did compromise from what's allowed in B3, but that was obviously a big concern to all of us.
Yeah, and that was our understanding, was that was the biggest concern, that they, that you wanted to have a restriction on uses that are allowed in B3. Anybody else who had a B3 would be allowed to do those things, but as a compromise, we're making concessions that that will stay with the property ad infinitum. And...
Just summarize those.
So, so, the, the first condition is that the land use cannot be in adult store, club, or lounge, or adult-themed restaurant, a business selling alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption except for a restaurant with table service, and provided that the revenue from alcohol sale does not exceed 40% of the total revenue, liquor store, casino, funeral home. And then we've also added, no portion of the 5,300-square-foot rooftop deck shall at any time be used as a restaurant or a bar. So, that, so we've added that to the developer's agreement so that it is very clear that that is not to be used as a restaurant or a bar. The other, the other condition is that the city commission waived Section 150.030D of the Unified Land Development Regulations, which requires a six-foot masonry wall when abutting residential uses.
Any restrictions on hours of operation?
The hours of operation, I'm looking at Kerry, we did not necessarily, we did not put that in because that related to noise. And what the city, what the city attorney had recommend is that was not going to address that specifically because we have to follow the noise ordinance anyway. And if the city decides to make that noise ordinance with more teeth, I know that was one of your concerns, we would still have to follow it. So, and I, and I do know that there's probably hardly anything that's going to go past 11 o'clock at that, at the, at the facility at all because of, there's early morning swim and it's, it's not a restaurant or a bar. So, if, if hours of...
No alcohol consumption outside?
There is, not as a restaurant or as a bar, there is the ability at some special events, there's a little small ancillary use of, they may be able, if they get the right license, maybe have a sell some beer or wine, but it's, it's as a secondary use, I think it's only 500 square feet, which is a patio.
Would you agree to, would you agree to not allow that?
No, we, we actually would, we'd, we'd prefer to, if, if the issue is hours of operation, we can absolutely agree to an hours of operation to close at a certain time and we could certainly add that to the, to the developer's agreement if, if necessary, or amend the developer's agreement to include that. But as one of the, we have an outdoor kitchen, a 500-square-foot outdoor kitchen for, for example, to have a July 4th event or something along those lines. And so, so that's the idea of being able to sell beer. It's not to, it's, it's, it's not to have swimmers there at night drinking beer in the parking lot. That absolutely is not what is, is necessary or, or even requested. So, and then, let's see, the other, that really generally is it from the developer's agreement. I'm looking at it very quickly, but it was the concession of the land use. It stayed with the land. It was the, the fence and the rest is a lot of legal ease that we have to pay attention to.
I'll ask our city attorney if he wants to add it.
I just want to, I just want to point out also that, you know, the intent of this was to resolve appeals of a variance and also a site plan as directed by the city commission and also as threatened by the property owner. But this ties up this current use of the property and any change in the use or development of the property must come back before the city commission for review and approval and also may require staff review and approval and planning and zoning board review and approval.
Right. So, I mean, I think that was, as the city attorney said, we're trying to move the project forward and we believe that we've come to an amicable agreement with this developer's agreement as a way to do that.
Okay.
We still have to get building permits and those kinds of things. This is just entitlements.
You do, really?
Yeah, we still got to get building permits.
And if I might add as well, additionally, zoning approval.
Right, you still have the second reading.
Second hearing on the ordinance to rezone...
Oh, okay.
...will be considered, I believe, at the next commission meeting.
So, this is just a rezo on the developer's agreement? It's not the zoning?
Unfortunately not, but, but my understanding is, if, if, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I was, I was thinking about something with my city attorney.
My understanding is, is that, that the direction was from the, at the last meeting was figure this stuff out first and then come back. And we had thought the zoning would be heard tonight, but understand that it can't, but we've, I think we figured this out and come to agreement so that then the next meeting can be the, the second reading for the rezoning.
Justin?
Just some general comments. I appreciate you talking about parking. As I've mentioned before, this property has a parking hardship no matter what. If you put up a hot dog stand, demolish the whole unit that's there and put up a hot dog stand, you'd have a problem with parking. So, you're a business that's, that's, that's come into the city that wants to do something very admirable for our residents and the community at large. I see great potential in this, so I am fine with the issue on parking and how it's been addressed. You've made a number of concessions. I'm in favor of the developer agreement. I appreciate the concessions that have been made and the clincher that anything that changes would have to come back before us and you'd have to go through that process again. So, there's no wide-open gate for you with this, with this developer's agreement. So, that should be understood by the general public. And you've certainly gone out to a lot of the boards and those, those representatives who are elected to represent those respective communities. You're never going to hit all of them. I guarantee you with our wayfinding sign, that we're going to find people that don't approve of what we, what we're probably moving forward with. But at, that being said, you can't always meet 100%, but I feel like you've, you've done above and beyond to bring something beneficial to the city. And so, I'm in favor of, of the developer's agreement as is.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make comments? Commissioner?
Comments or questions?
Well, are there still more questions from the commission? No? Okay. Comments?
You know, I could hold my no vote to next time, but I want you to know that it's going to be that, so might as well do it tonight. It's because of the parking. I'm not going to personally vote for another project in Wilton Manners that doesn't even come close to the parking that should be there. And the first 4th of July celebration you have there will be chaos, in my opinion, because people are all going to want to be there and they're going to show up expecting the first time they go there to find a place to park. And if they're all set to go in there, they're going to find a parking place somewhere.
You can have a seat.
And I'm not going to subject to the neighbors being, having to deal with that. So, you know, I, I wish you good luck with the rest of the commission. I think you're going to make it. I desperately would like to see that redeveloped, but I'm not going to just, to me, violate the whole idea that we were going to try to rein in parking. So, when it counts, expect a no vote for me and probably tonight.
If you will make some concessions about the wall, I will vote yes. If you don't, I will not. It's plain and simple. The parking is an issue with me and, and I think you can work that out with, with Walmart or something like that when that comes about. But it is concerning me, but the wall, the planning and zoning, you know, gave you nine out of 10 variances and this is the one they said. And what I heard today from the public that live over there, it needs to stay. I don't mind giving you some time, a few years to get up and running and, and making some money, but it definitely has to be put up. So, I'm going to be a no vote if that doesn't get put into the resolution.
Julie?
No, I'm...
Oh, you don't need to say anything if you...
No, I'm good.
Okay. I supported the project. I think it's a great investment in Wilton Manners and I do appreciate you interested in, in bringing this to our city. I think it's a clever use of the property, which has a lot of challenges and, and deals with most of the challenges. I'm okay with the parking. That's not a, ideally, it would be great if it could satisfy our parking code or come closer to it, but in this day and age, I get it. People are going to use Uber or other forms of transportation. I don't think it's going to be a huge issue. People are going to realize that there's no parking there. And so, when they want to go there, they'll do something else because you're not going to drive there, circle around for 30 minutes and then go home. So, I think people will figure out that there's no parking pretty quickly. I would like some restriction on the hours of operation. And I think actually this, here's my, my plan with respect to that. I'll either take the, the masonry wall, but I won't hold you to that if you would restrict the hours of operation. And my thinking there is, and I don't know if you're familiar with this, but we have or had a swim school in Wilton Manners on 26th Street. Very popular, operated for kids. Tons of families in and around Wilton Manners sent their children there and they had restrictions on the hours of operation. The neighbors behind them sued the city to challenge the approval of it and then sued the owners of the property as a, on a nuisance basis privately to challenge the operations on the grounds that it was operating too late and it was just too much noise in the evening. And there, I think their hours of operation closed at like 9:00 PM or something. I can't, it was like a restricted hours of operation and children. So, I, I think that this has the potential of getting us sued or getting you sued or both by residents who aren't going to be happy with it. And I think either the wall or restriction on the hours of operation would go a long way to rectifying that. You can come up and address that if you like.
I think I have a few other questions, so...
Sort of.
In speaking with the applicant, the concern about the hours of operations, he has no intention of operating past 11 o'clock, but they do early, I mean, and there's a number of swimmers that are here. We didn't have them all come up and speak just to save some time, but the, we have a 5:30 in the morning practice.
I'm not, all right. I didn't...
And I didn't think that the morning was a problem.
That wasn't the intent, but, but I, I don't think you're going to be having, well, I don't, I don't know, this Wilton Manners, maybe we'll be having parties outside at 5:30 in the morning?
No, no.
I would probably continue from somewhere the night before, but...
Not this group, trust me. So, so we are, we are certainly amenable to having, if we can have a...
So, a curfew.
Hours, curfew at 11 o'clock, which, which then allows the ability to have the wood fence. And Commissioner Newton, I understand your, your, your position with respect to that, but I, I guess I would plead with you that we have, we have done everything that we have, we can do related to getting our neighbors behind the project. And I understand that you spoke to a couple people, but we, if we violate the noise, we're going to get fined. I mean, we...
It's actually very hard to do that.
It's very hard, yeah. You'd be surprised.
It's, you have to, I mean, first of all, in a B3, the decibel level is fairly high and, and it's higher during the day. I mean, I think it only gets down to relatively neighborhood level like...
But...
Yeah, 11 o'clock.
We're already making a concession related to that it can never... We're already making a concession related to that it can never be a full B3. There's a bar catty corner to the property that you can hear for blocks. We're at Oakland Park Boulevard, which you have the noise, the ambient noise from the street. So the difference between a wood fence and a masonry wall related to that specific use, if that was the only use and there was a, it was a field behind it, is insignificant.
I mean, if you limit your hours of operations to not past 11:00 PM, I'm good with it as is. So I don't know if anybody else needs to come on?
Yeah, our applicant is okay with limiting the hours to 11 o'clock.
So, uh-
No, no morning hour limitation, correct?
No, I mean, yeah.
No what?
I know, I wanna support people that wanna swim in the morning. I don't wanna restrict that.
Yeah, no morning, yeah. Thank you.
I'll be there to swim, yeah.
We'll get you there, you know? Good exercise.
But, uh-
They have water tennis there.
Yeah.
So yes, we will restrict-
Two ways to kill my shoulder at once.
We're happy to restrict the hours. Would that be something that would happen as part of this developers agreement or part of?
And you're not, you're not allowing outdoor speakers, correct? Like outdoor sound systems?
Only at the special event, but, but, no, people are swimming. They got their heads in the water. So, so, no, we're, that's not the intention at all.
All right. All right, we can't really do comment from the public like that. I was actually thinking that we might wanna, I don't wanna necessarily bring this back, but it would be good, I think, to actually have a public hearing on this, which we haven't had, but I'm not gonna do that. We'll do that on the zoning, which comes up next week.
Rezoning, which is a public hearing, right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So what do you need from us at this point? There's a motion, I guess, to approve the developers agreement and the one change that would be to restrict the hours of operation, I guess.
Close at 11 o'clock.
Monday through Friday, no later than 11:00 PM.
Oh, they're not open on weekends?
I mean, I'm sorry.
Yeah, seven days a week, 11-
Seven days a week, 11:00 PM.
Sundays? Do you wanna restrict the hours tighter on Sundays?
No.
I'm not asking for that. He's a no vote anyhow, so don't worry about it.
Okay. 11.
All right, so who made the, who made the motion?
I did.
Do you accept that change to the developers agreement? Okay. All right, call the, call the motion.
Commissioner Carson?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
No.
Commissioner Green?
No.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Yes.
Mayor Resnick?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming out and again, I apologize for coming late. If I didn't get here, though, it'd be a two-two, just telling, just saying.
Yep.
There may be another vote, but, uh-
All right, so where are we on the motion to reconsider? Property located at 549 Northeast 21st Court. Leanne?
Mrs. Sanreson?
Yes.
I worked for the tripwire, I think, whatever I had.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant for the development at the property located at 549 Northeast 21st Court submitted an application for the allocation of 12 flexibility units, which would have allowed for a project of 16 townhomes on the site. This resolution was considered by the city commission at your April 10th meeting. At that meeting, the commission approved the allocation of eight flexibility units and tonight there is a motion to reconsider that resolution.
Excuse me, can I just add something, please?
Sure.
On that same, excuse me, April 10th meeting, in addition to considering the flex allocation resolution, we conducted a series of quasi judicial public hearings. One was a rezoning ordinance, which was tabled until this evening, and also a plat resolution, which was also tabled to this evening. So that's why it would be appropriate for your consideration to consider first the motion to reconsideration, 'cause that will then determine the future course of events for the evening with respect to this developers' applications.
Okay.
Does the motion need to be made?
Yes, a motion to reconsider the resolution to 2018-032 would need to be made.
Mayor? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Well, Julie wasn't here last time and she wanted to know some more about it, correct?
Sure. I've had an opportunity to review most of the backup information and I regret that I had a little emergency at that particular meeting and had to leave early, so I was unable So I am prepared to, we have a motion to reconsider.
If it passes, we move on to the, to the, to the result.
Do we vote on that first?
Yeah, we might, yeah, we'd vote on the motion to reconsider. If it doesn't pass, then there's no point going on.
So I think it's important that I have an op, I hope for the opportunity to be able to speak on this matter and deliberate with my colleagues.
But we, yeah, absolutely, but we can have discussion on the motion to reconsider, which is an opportunity for you to bring up the items that you'd like to bring up. I mean, I'll talk about why I didn't support more flex units than what we authorized, if you'd like.
Okay, and that, go ahead, sure.
You know, there were, and this was a public hearing previously, this is currently not open for the public, but this property is between, you know, a highly dense property and it's currently a single-family, one house and adjacent to single-family residential houses, which I understand have been there a long time, as single-family residential houses. And I'm all in favor of, you know, doing buffering neighborhoods. We did that between, you know, the Wilton Drive Business District and then the more single-family residential districts behind, behind Wilton Drive with the buffering neighborhood. But the proposed development in my mind with the number of units that they were seeking, it's not a step down, it's just an incredibly dense area. And I've always said that I was going to protect single-family residential homes from harmful impact of denser developments and we've been able to do that. We've had development in the city and for the most part, it's meshed with the single-family residential neighborhoods and the developers were able to make it work. They were able to come in and develop appropriate properties that gave them the density they needed, but still didn't adversely impact the single-family residential homes. I think with the flex units that they've requested, it would adversely impact the single-family residential homes that have been there first and that, you know, they're not doing anything to harm the way of life. I think it would be very unfair to those residents to just change their way of life, just frankly, so that the developers can meet their bottom line. There's other projects that could be built in this property aside from a 14 or 16-unit townhome, townhome community. And so that's why I supported the flex units that I thought was a good compromise. I think what we awarded was, what was the final, eight, eight flex units and they'd be allowed four units by right, so they could actually build a 12-unit community, which I thought was a good compromise. I still think it's gonna be a little adverse to the residents that live on the single-family homes adjacent to it, but I think it could be designed in a way that would minimize the adverse impacts and create a nice kind of blend between the highly dense area gables and the single-family residential communities. So that's why I supported the eight, but not the requested 12. So that was, that was my thinking.
And Mayor, how would you feel about a compromise in between like 10 flex units?
Well, that was, that's what they're actually seeking now and that would allow 14 units. I think that's, I think it's just too dense. I think it would have a tremendously adverse impact on the residential areas next door.
Well, what I'd like to see, Mayor, just let you know, I'd like to see the 14. I haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
If they have a plan of the 14, it'd be great to see it because saying you want it and you had 16, but I've never seen anything that says 14. So if you've got something, I'd like to see it, since I don't have it, I don't see it.
We'll allow staff to do a brief presentation.
Would you like a full presentation on the project?
No.
Show me the 14 units up there. Please.
Oh, it would be a lack of symmetry.
It'd be nice if you go back from 14 to-
That's 14.
They brought in 16.
No, I know. Now, where's, you have, do you have, can you go back and forth from 14 to 16? And the reason I'm asking this on the commission is because, you know, you push back one unit, it goes back so far. They wanna approach a few feet, I wouldn't mind it, make the units a little bit bigger, but I don't want them putting in 14 units in the same space they had 16. And just make all the units bigger.
Good point.
We do not, Mayor, Commission, we do not have a 16-unit plan on this presentation, so I apologize.
You don't have the 16, but you have the 14.
We have the 14 and the applicant also was proposing a second plan of 12.
12 what?
Six townhomes and six single-family homes, which is this plan that's on the screen right now.
But that plan there is just as far out as the 16, so that does nothing to push back the units.
It's a bigger footprint.
Well, it makes the, it makes the six units bigger, but that wasn't the intent. I mean, I don't know if they wanna come up and-
That's their site plan, so.
Well, I know, but that's not my intent. When I said-
Well, I'm gonna open this up to the public, since we're allowing staff to speak and the applicant to speak, I'm gonna allow anybody who wants to speak on this to speak. Just confine your remarks to three minutes, please.
He said, what is the applicant?
Do you want me to speak now or you want me to wait? You can speak now, that's fine. Okay. Tim Hernandez with-
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
We're gonna open it up to the public and the applicant.
And the applicant is gonna speak, since the next two items, if they get there are quasi judicial, which are subject to a different standard, I suggest that anybody who's going to be speaking and testifying be sworn in.
Okay.
Please stand up if you plan to speak on this item, either for or against any of the applications, the plat, the rezoning, or the flex allocation. Raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that any testimony you've given this proceeding will be truthful? Thank you.
Go ahead. If you can, please confine your remarks to three minutes at this point.
Tim Hernandez with New Urban Communities, 200 Congress Park Drive, Suite 201, Delray Beach, Florida 33445. Yeah, we, if you look at the plan that we, that we, that we had before, we had five units on each of those two buildings that surround the courtyard. So we reduced the size of those buildings by the 20 feet and we did increase the width of the extra units by two feet. What that allows us to do is provide a little bit, you know, more diverse and a little bit larger product, but there's still, we moved them back, so the net effect was moving the, we subtracted 20 and we added eight. So we moved the units all 12 feet back from where they were. So it's a significant amount of additional space and as I recall, it's like 29 feet from, our setback is now 29 feet from the property line. And the single-family homes on the other side are only 22, 23 feet away. So we actually have further setback on those two courtyard buildings than any of the single families do. So we did, we tried to do what you guys asked us to do, which was, was move the units back, create a larger green space against those single-family detached homes in the courtyard.
All right, I'll ask, I'll open it up if there's questions from the commission, to the applicant. Tom?
We do correctly discuss the houses on the east side across the street. What about the houses on the north side? There are homes there.
Yeah, we're about, I believe we're like 37, I can't read it, but it's like 37 feet or 39 feet. You require that we are setback the height of the building from the property line on the rear and that was, the height of our building, I think, by your code is 35 feet and I think we exceed it by a couple feet.
Under what zoning?
Under the RM zoning, actually.
Okay.
All right, so the front building, how wide are all those units? 20 feet each?
The one on, the one that faces 21st Court, they're 20 feet wide.
Correct.
The ones that face into the courtyard, the interior courtyard around the pool, those are 22 feet wide, the 40s.
So what you did is you only, you only gave back 12 feet, is what you did?
I gave back 12 feet for each building, yes, out of the 20.
And what do you put in that place, that 12 feet?
Green space, just green.
No trees, no?
No trees. No, that's not a landscape plan, Commissioner, that's just the site plan.
I know, but I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm trying to make sure that the houses to the southeast-
Yes.
Get more space. I mean, that's what it was all about by losing two units.
That's what we did.
Well, you did, but you gained more in the other ones, we pushed it, not the whole unit.
Well, we, we-
Well, I thought there was gonna be 20 feet more of green space and now there's only 12, 'cause you made the units bigger. And, I mean, I don't mind that much, but it was just funny that we're trying to move it away from the houses on, across the street and you did that to a point, but you didn't do the whole way, you only-
We're just trying to recover some of what we're losing here. I mean, it's a big, it's a big difference. That's all we really did. And we tried, we did the best, I thought.
No, you only had 12 and you might get 14, so you're adding two.
No, I'm saying, I'm the distance. I'm trying to recover because we're, you're right, because we went from 16 to 12 and now I'm hoping to get back to 14. We're trying to-
Yeah, but by going 14, you, you made them bigger. If you would've kept them a little smaller, you would've had two more units to sell and still have more space than that, than just the 12 feet you have now.
Well, you can also say, for example, take the interior units and make, say those are 20 feet and then you gain four more feet by doing that. I think the end units wanna be bigger anyway, they're nicer, people typically pay a little bit more for those. So we're just trying to recover a little bit of the, the cost by making the units a little bit bigger, so we can sell them.
Well, you're not making any sense to me, because you only had 12, you might get 14, so you're getting two more units, so you are recovering costs. 'Cause the building's almost the same size, it's just short eight feet. That's all you did, was shorten the buildings, I mean, don't forget about the units, the building itself is only shortened by eight feet.
It's as dense a project as before, in other words, but just with less units.
Right.
Commissioner, if you, if you want the ball 20, we'll make them all 20, we'll make them all smaller.
That was my intent, you were gonna knock off one unit and then that'd be another 20 feet.
Then we'll agree to do that, if that's what you-
But I was good with that, but now you're trying to stretch it out and that's not what I was looking for.
Well, I, okay.
Hang on one second, so what's the price point of these? Are these market rate?
Yeah, they're all market rate, but I mean, they're going, it's going up, obviously, from what we originally had said, so.
So you were at like 500 or so before?
Yeah, we were starting at 500. They're probably gonna be, I mean, the reality is, we lose 25% of the units. I mean, it's, it's, that's a massive impact, because it's not like I went from, if, you know, if I had a 50-unit project and I went, lost four units, it's not that big of a deal. It's, you know, that's what, 8% or something. When you have a, when you have a 16-unit project and you lose 25% of units, I mean, that's a huge impact, because all our costs, the roads, the drainage, everything else, the pool, is just fixed, so the only thing you can do is just raise the prices to-
Yeah, I mean, I just made it simple and easy, so we're not here all night.
Yeah.
If they stay the same size they were before, you knock off one unit, I'm for it.
All right.
If they keep it bigger, then I'm not gonna go for it.
Then that's all they do?
Just playing simple, so we're not sitting here all night.
That's fine, that's fine.
Dollar percent.
Yep.
I'm sorry, what are we doing?
One, one unit from what?
From the, the north and the middle one, the size they were before, you take one full unit off instead of taking one unit off and then expanding back eight more feet.
So how many units?
There's 14, but not that size, they're gonna be moved back. If another eight feet's gonna be back off the houses.
The number of units would be?
Oh, 14, yeah.
14.
But the building would be smaller and farther away from the single-family homes to the south.
So you're knocking off one from what?
They're not knocking off anything from a number of units.
Well, from the original, I'm knocking off one, but from the, the way it was voted on last time, I'm actually adding one to each one of the beds.
It was-
Because there's only 12.
12 units were approved.
Right.
Eight flex and four by right. So now the consideration we're discussing is 10-
Maybe 14.
10, four by right, 14.
Four by right, which means 14. I agree, I would have expected, and I, I've been on board for the, with this project, I just expected that it was going to be reduced by that one building.
I know.
And I'm a little...
Or are your units on the end or something?
Yeah, I'm a little, and thank you, Commissioner, for, for pointing it out, because that's not exactly what I thought was going to come back to me.
Well, that's been, that was what occurred at the last hearing as well.
And, and my whole idea on this was to try to decrease the footprint.
Correct.
And this has not done that.
The other, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, there was a comment made earlier tonight about how we need development and greater density, and I agree. It's just not here. I, we've even told our planning department to find some places that would be appropriate in Wilton Manners, to have taller buildings. I hear all the time about, let's protect a neighborhood. Well, there's a neighborhood behind this, and evidently, it doesn't need a lot of protection, because we're, we're talking about increasing it to from what we approved before. If we do this, uh, you know, if, as long as we're going to do with math, well, I don't want to change it at all. In fact, I'm very disappointed that this even came up tonight, and I can't tell you how disappointed I am. But if we're going to start talking about math, you know, if, is there a magic number? It has to go in twos? Uh, maybe it can be one. So, uh, but the footprint has not changed, essentially.
It did, it did.
Well, okay, this is not going to be arguing back and forth with the Commission.
It did change, but I'm saying, if you want the twenty feet wide, we'll do that.
Yeah. Hang on, there's a motion to reconsider, though, the eight units that were awarded last time, that's what we're discussing right now.
I know, but actually, you still have public hearing that people want to help speak to.
I'm going to bring up other people, I want to speak on this as well. I have a comment, too, before I call, on, on Justin. When we award flex units, they're supposed to be a public benefit, you can have a seat, I'm not asking questions. I don't see a public benefit of the developer building as many units as they possibly can on property that currently has warehouse, um, and, and we're rezoning to a zoning that's not technically allowed by our code, it's what they're requesting anyhow. Where, they're asking for anywhere from eight to ten flex units, we only have seventy-nine in this district, and there's going to be other projects that come forward that are probably going to request flex units also.
Mayor, is your mic on? Sorry, somebody, somebody in the back is...
Sorry. Okay, sorry, I don't know if it's on or not. Yeah, okay, sorry about that. What I was saying is, when we award flex units, they're supposed to be a public benefit. And while, yes, a development, a nice development that, that adds some density in an area where it's appropriate, is a nice development, is a nice public benefit, I don't think this property is, provides the public benefit, especially non-affordable units. It'd be one thing if you were bringing in something that'd be kind of workforce housing and not market rate, that would be something that would attract people that want to live where they can walk to the drive and otherwise can't afford it. This is not going to be that property, and, and I think we're going to get requ, I know for a fact, we're going to get requests for flex units in the same district from other developments that probably would be more appropriate for awarding of flex units. And if we award eight to ten to this project, then that's, leaves sixty-nine to seventy-one that we can award for other projects. I don't want to cut ourselves in terms of flex units that we have available for other projects in the same district. Unfortunately, this district is limited in flex units, and so it's, if we do this now, we're, we could be easily cutting ourselves short with respect to redevelopment of some other properties that we've talked about that would be prime for development. Justin?
Thank you, Gary. Or we could not, and that would be my other counterpoint to this. I mean, colleagues, if you looked at the zoning district all around this particular area, and with respect to the comments that are made, there are other areas that have the level of what I would call moderate density. This is not Wilton Tower. This is, we're talking two townhomes, and Commissioner Newton, I'm with you wholeheartedly, that the size should remain uniform and consistent, the twenty. I think that that was my understanding and the intent, as to minimize the bricks and mortar footprint on the parcel is important for our residents and what we expect to put onto this piece of property. But this strikes at the core of our vision for our city. You know, we have to find the right balance, and there are going to be days where we think two more additional townhomes isn't the right balance, and there are going to be days where we think that that might be okay. And I would hate to see the Commission and, and our city miss out on the opportunity of what this particular parcel of land could become, and what it means as far as taxable value to our city, and the public benefit of how that translates to our residents. So, we're talking about two townhomes. I wanted Commissioner Carson to be fully participant in that discussion, and if we reconsider, let's see what we decide then. If we don't, let's move on to quasi-judicial, and with all respect in my heart to each and every one of you, we'll figure out what that number is, but I think we should figure it out, all five of us together.
No, I agree, I, I, and which we, which is what we're doing.
This is open for public comment, so if anybody else would like to come forward and make any public remarks, just identify yourself for the record and... That was sworn in. And indicate whether you've been sworn in. Come forward, come on.
He wasn't still up.
Yeah, well, he just reconsidered.
Brad Nemeth, 616 Northeast 22nd Drive, um, right, right at the end of, of 22nd Drive, right next to this complex. And I, I appreciate the, the improvements that the developers tried to make. I, when I first saw that, I said, yeah, those are, those are wider units, we're, we're not making, there's not a whole lot of compromise here. And then I reflected on all of the presentations in the past, the, the developer talked about design continuity and design, you know, the whole aesthetics of it. So, to me, being a designer myself, I could see four, four, and four all being the twenty feet wide. It just makes aesthetic sense, it'll all be in a line, and the four unit, and the six units in front, put those four units right in the center, and then it creates a smoother transition from Gables to 22nd Drive without having that one corner of the building right on the 22nd Drive and Twenty-First Court intersection, where it's closer than it is now, a whole lot closer. And I do really want to also state that I, I don't know, you know, the plans, if FPL is going to put all those power lines underground, but that's what will have to happen in order to put 22nd Drive according to this plan, because currently, even that plan is showing there are power poles there. So, that's, and, and the plan still doesn't really address all of the, you know, the, the traffic flow of headlights going around in, in all hours of the night, going into our front doors and our bedrooms. So, it'd be great to see just a little more aesthetics overall, a little more architectural featuring. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward?
Ken Stone, 621 Northeast Twenty-First Court. I live within three hundred block, three hundred feet of this particular. On prior occasions, I've spoke about my concern on the density of this, I still have concern. I'm also a bit, I guess, surprised that now we're looking at a plan where none of the neighbors have seen for fourteen on the screen, where the developer himself said he couldn't even read it, and we weren't, the neighbors weren't apprised of that size. When we approved, or you approved, the eight plus the four, I think that was a great compromise, and I think it would be a great addition. I think this, all of a sudden, coming in a meeting is a bit strange as well, showing a new floor, floor footprint with more units. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Bob Cassidy, 417 Northwest 23rd Street, Wilton Manners. I don't know if this is appropriate, because I am the vice chairman on the, on the Planning and Zoning Board, but I'd like to raise one point that, in deference to Constance Rupender, who at the board emphasized that on the west side of the first row of houses, there's a beautiful tree, and her argument was, if anything was lopped off, lop off that side because, to preserve the tree that is already there. So, I just wanted to raise that, because with all the details that you're dealing with right now, that's one that might just get lost in the shovel. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment?
All right, I will close the public hearing, back to the Commission.
Motion to reconsider.
There's a motion to reconsider, any further discussion with respect to the motion?
I'm just curious about the headlights. I'm just trying to remember, don't you go all the way down and take a left and come through the, the project, so the headlights will never come out to the two homes that are, three homes at the end? I mean, I'm just...
The front units?
No.
Okay.
No, no, that's what I'm going to ask, but I mean, down here, it's the side of the house, it's not the front of the house, the front here.
Right. We made it, we made it so that...
Short story, short story, not the long version.
We made it so you come in, and you immediately take a left to go between those, so that those, the people that went to live in those two first buildings to the south, they would never even impact anybody at all. Only people that would impact it would be those four units at the very top. So, you could make it go the other way, but we made, we thought that was a smarter decision to make them go in, immediately turn left, and then go around the loop.
Well, don't the arrows show you go either way?
Yes, on the, on the bottom portion, and then it turns into a one-way drive, so you cannot, you cannot go, um, uh, you know, the other way.
I just don't want them to go up, then I'm lost, because I thought, you can go up to the top and then take a right and go, but the headlights will go right in that person's yard or house?
No, you could do, no, you can't. You can only go in and turn to the left.
Okay, so you can't go all the way down the end of the street, you take a...
The only people that can go down the end of the street are their residents, they're, they're, them.
Or is there any reason for them, it would be that four?
That's right, for only, all of our residents, we, we're trying to be sensitive and, and make them so they turn in immediately, and then they just go right back out, they never have to go up to the top.
All right, so the homeowners back there would have to come around the corner there, come back around to the front to come out.
Can our staff take the podium, please? Because you're really answering staff issues that would be decided by staff.
If I could clarify, Roberta Moore, Community Development Services Director. The site plan has not been reviewed by staff.
Correct.
It was provided to staff late on Wednesday.
Right.
So, we have not had sufficient time to review this.
And this hasn't gone to DRC?
No, this has not. One of the things that we would be reviewing during the DRC process is traffic circulation. So, hearing the concerns of the Commission, we would take a look at how the circulation of the, the traffic flow would be on this property to help alleviate and address any concerns that you have.
Right. So, the question is, the traffic yet hasn't been decided? Okay. Uh, Justin?
So, procedurally, when this goes to DRC, this Commission can either allow DRC to have final sign-off, or it can come back to us, as I understand it, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion on the motion for reconsideration? Call the motion.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Carson?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
No.
Mayor Resnick?
No. All right, so we're on reconsideration, we have Resolution 2018-032. City Manager?
This is the resolution that was approved at the previous Commission meeting allocating eight flexibility units to the project at 549 Twenty-First Court.
Okay. What would be procedural on this, on the, do we need a motion to approve the resolution?
Well, the motion to reconsider that you just approved puts back on the table the last motion that was before you, which is the motion to approve this resolution. So, it would be appropriate to either have discussion on this, to amend it, or to vote on it.
All right, so if the clerk will read the resolution, please?
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Wilton Manners, Florida, allocating eight flexibility units for the property generally located at 549 Northeast Twenty-First Court, Wilton Manners, Florida, as more particularly described in Exhibit A, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
What is...
This is a motion to approve 2018-032 with a second.
It's the eight units.
It's to approve that which we approved last time. So, discussion among Commission. Justin?
I would be in favor of amending this to ten flexibility units. I guess procedurally, I offer up the question with regards to our issue on consistency with the width of the units and size, that's probably not dealt with this, that's probably dealt more with one of the other quasi-judicials.
Yes, sir, that is correct. So, my suggestion, again, in anticipation of the Commission making a motion to deviate from this resolution, and if the Commission were to grant ten flexibility units, my suggestion would be, following that, to table the ordinance and the plat again to the next Commission meeting, that would be available to give staff sufficient time, DRC sufficient time to consider the revised site plan, which is an exhibit to the rezoning ordinance, the development guidelines, which is also an exhibit to the rezoning ordinance, and also consider the revision to the plat.
Okay.
Exactly what I was going to do, because I knew we needed, had to give time for the residents over there and give time for our staff to look at it. I mean, I was not going to push this through, if it was trying to be done by that way.
No, no.
Because we got to make sure that the residents over there and, and everybody knows what's going on, so, um, just makes sense.
All right. Justin?
If I may, I offer an amendment to the reso to allocate ten flexibility units. I offer the amendment to the, to the motion to allocate ten flexibility units.
Commissioner Green?
Can I make an amendment to that, or do we have to vote on that?
Well, he has a motion, and he doesn't have a...
A motion on the floor without a second.
He doesn't have a second.
Second.
Because, can I amend that to make it nine?
Sure, there's a, there's a motion on the floor, while we have it.
With a second of ten. You're offering an amendment to the amendment.
Right.
Okay. I would have an objection to it.
I'll second it.
So, you're offering a, an amendment...
The current motion that's on the floor is to make it nine flexibility units.
No, point of order, he's amending the amendment.
So, we have to vote on it.
Is there, is there a second?
Yes, second is over there for the ten.
No, I seconded, uh...
Now, Commissioner Green has amended my amendments.
No, you have to vote on the amendment first.
Yeah, you vote on the last amendment, right.
Yeah, so you're up.
You want to discuss it at all?
Well, again, you know, I thought we had decided on this, I'm concerned about the quality of life. I, you know, I, I keep hearing from Commissioners that we are concerned about residential areas, and I want to develop the corridor, that's great, let's do it. But let's leave people alone as much as possible that have a house right across the street. I don't know if you remember the renderings, the beautiful enticing renderings from the developers, that showed these buildings and trees almost falling out of the, the lot. It was so packed. So, if, you know, I hope before we do a final vote, another time, that we can see that wonderful rendering again, because to me, I was kind of a little neutral about it till I saw that, and, you know, if, if you, well, you know how I feel, so, anyway.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I agree to a point, the problem, the problem is, we are trying to go for, you have a, you have the Gables, which is an apartment rental, now you're going to have owned units, and they're, if they move the, if we, if they get rid of the, they got rid of four, but I really think the two, if they did it right, and moved it back where it's supposed to be, you would get that green foliage, and again, I agree with you, I want to see the rendering, that's why I was going to table as soon as we got to that point, to this point, and made it so it's barely visible, and they can do that very easily. And then as long as the lighting from the cars and the, and the street is done right, that, you know, is by the, the city standards, and for the fire and the police and all that, I think this can be a very viable project for the drive. We talk about, we need to get denser around the drive. Here's what it does, it gets people on the drive. You walk to the drive, and that's what this does, and I, and I, I wouldn't mind it if I lived there, and it's the way I look at things sometimes, if, how did I, I didn't like it before when there was five units and it was right on the edge right there. Moving it back and putting all those trees and all in there, I think will make a huge difference, and I wouldn't bother them, now I wouldn't want headlights going in my, in my, front of my yard, and as long as they can prove to me that's not going to happen, I think this would be a very viable project for this city, so...
By the way, the Gables adjacent to this is not four stories, it's three-story townhouses. That's what's next to this property. I used to live there.
Yeah. Rentals.
Oh, that's right. Anybody else wish to make comments, Julie?
Commissioner Green may know the answer to this, but where's the Constance Ruupender tree that he just spoke about?
It's that last unit down in the.
To the left.
To the left, bottom.
And if, if we were going to.
There it is, yep.
Right there, okay, got it, thank you. If, if we were, according to your amendment that you offered, Commissioner Green, and for lack of a better word, which unit would you lop off? That one?
Well, I have negative feelings about that one, but as Scott has pointed out, the people, the humans are going to be most affected by a couple of other units. The in ones of the next two, well, all of the buildings.
Well, this one is the side, but.
Yeah, but the tree is that.
Somebody else wants to speak, I don't know if you want to bring him up. Guy in the back. This is quasi judicial too, is this one quasi judicial? No, this is still on the reso, all right. We'll have an opportunity on the.
This is on the amendment to the amendment.
Right.
Right.
So I mean, unless anybody wants to make other comments, I mean, I still support the eight units frankly, I mean, I compromise with nine just to hear the comments of my colleagues, but I still think that this is going to have a very negative impact on the residential area next to it, and so I just apologize to you because I don't think we can do anything to stop it at this point. And so you might want to consider, you know, putting your home on the market before this gets built, because I think it'll actually decrease the value, but that's, that's another story.
Mayor, if I may, I would disagree with that statement. I think that in the allocation of flex units and the, and the design approval, you know, we can certainly try to address, you know, the issues of our residents and to tell a resident to sell their property, I don't think is, is appropriate.
Well, it's how I feel.
You're entitled to your opinion, but I would very much respectfully.
If I lived in a single-family house.
Yes, but the point is, Mayor, if.
Well, you think, you just told me what I said was not appropriate, so I can explain how I feel. I live in a single-family home now.
I would say that by telling a resident to move?
I would move if this were being built next to me. I live in a single-family house now, I've lived in that house for over 20 years. If this were being built across the street from me, I would sell my house.
And I have faith in this commission to find a happy medium between the issue of design and the residential concerns, so.
So.
Sorry, we are differing an opinion on that.
So happy medium, you mean nine?
They were asking for 16, I'm not going that far, so.
12.
All right.
They're not even entitled to that based on acreage.
I understand, Commissioner, I understand.
This property is entitled to four units, that's it. That's all they're entitled to.
We have belabored the issue and the inconsistency with code, the need for us to revise our code, bring it up to speed, and the issue of visioning, and the item of density, and how that's appropriate and in what corridors and what parcels. This certainly strikes to that, and we are going to respectfully get at a number. I have no doubt.
We vote on other projects that are just as dense as this, so it's not like it's unusual for us, so.
Well, it's not, it's not the density, it's just where it's located.
Wow, it's right next to.
All right, let's call the motion to amend. Call that.
On the nine.
Motion to amend to nine.
On the nine?
Yeah. The nine first, because there was an amendment to my amendment.
It's not going to go anywhere, just want to make sure.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Mayor Resnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Carson?
No.
Commissioner Newton?
No.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
No.
All right, so we're back to the motions and amends for 10?
For 10.
All right, call the motion on that.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Yes.
Commissioner Carson?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
No.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Resnick?
No.
Well, I'm sorry, what are we?
10.
No, we're, we did 10, we amended it to 10, and we just passed it to 10.
And that is with the discussion about making those units the right size.
Well, all we did was vote on flex units, we didn't do anything on site plan.
We need to do what Scott had recommended, in my opinion.
Right, now I want to table the next two.
We need to read the, you need to do them one at a time.
One at a time, okay, I'm sorry.
We should read them by title and table them to a date certain. You may want to have a discussion with staff to determine how long it will take, and the applicant, how long it will take to get the site plans revised for staff to review it so that they could come back to the city commission.
And we need it as a date certain.
Otherwise, it has to be re-advertized.
Okay, all right. Well, does someone want to make a, well, let's, let's talk to, they are talking. Come up with dates, I guess. Leanne, what dates do we want to bring this back?
I think Director Moore is finding out the, the full set of plans for the new project so that we can immediately schedule a DRC meeting. Director Moore, how long?
All right, I'll tell you what, if our city clerk will read ordinance number 2018-005.
She just gave the time.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Wilton Manners, Florida, amending Section 20-020 entitled District Map by Rezoning the Property Known as 549 Northeast 21st Court, Wilton Manners, Florida, as more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here to, rezoning the property from multifamily residential RM 16 to Plan Unit Development PUDR, contingent upon allocating 12 flexibility units by Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Wilton Manners, granting final site plan approval, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, before we do that, city managers, office, city manager, you want to make any comments with respect to this?
No, Director Moore is indicating that we would need 60 days time before this comes back.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion to table for 60 days, to the first city commission meeting after 60 days?
So moved.
Is it, Roberta, that's July 10th or July 24th?
Well, 60 days up to the 24th, right?
Yeah.
July 24th.
All right, does someone want to make a motion to?
Second.
All right. Call the motion to table.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Carson?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Mayor Resnick?
Yes.
All right, then we have Resolution 2018-31. Mr. Clerk, read that, please.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Wilton Manners, Florida, approving the plat application, PL-17-01, for Mike Carmadello and Mark Frankel for the property located at 549 Northeast 21st Court, Wilton Manners, Florida, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Is there a motion?
Motion to table to July 24, as the previous.
Second.
Call the motion to table.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Carson?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Mayor Resnick?
Yes.
All right, no one finished business, reports from boards and administrative officials, city managers report?
I don't have anything to report this evening.
Okay. City attorneys report?
Oh.
Yeah, I was wondering if the city manager could make a few comments about a development that was approved last night by the P&amp;Z. This is the type of thing that, since there were no variances and no.
Really?
Yeah, well, they, they already did a request for a variance and they turned them down and they came back with a, a new plan. But because there would be no rezoning or things like that, you would not hear about this, and I wanted you to know that there is a new 15-unit complex that is going to be built, and, well, she's going to tell you.
Yes, Roberta. Roberta Moore, Community Development Services Director. The address is approximately 611 to 615 Northeast 29th Drive. It is between Sixth Avenue and ICPP. It's called Del Mar Estates, it's just north of the Wilton Walk project. They were approved for 15 multifamily units last evening. It's within, it, the first time it went to the planning and zoning board, as Commissioner Green indicated, it did require a variance. For the setback, however, based on comments that the planning and zoning board provided, they did go back to the drawing board and were able to meet all the code requirements. I think what's important about this particular project is the architects of record and the property owner understood the issues concerning climate change and sea level rise and on the first floor, they've actually elevated the first floor, so on the bottom floor is really just some basic uses, accessory uses to the overall project, where your first story of living is actually much higher off of the ground. Even though the city has not adopted the ordinance for generators, they also were amenable to providing a generator, meeting our code requirements that we were proposing to, to the commission.
And in addition to the generator being agreed to, they also are putting in a charging station, and that's required, I'm assuming.
Yes.
But they also will designate it as electric vehicle parking only.
Do you recall who the developer is, of him?
It is Del Mar Estates. It is, his name is Dominic.
So I mean, have they done other?
Ponatelli, thank you.
Have they done other projects?
Wilton Walk, they're the developers of Wilton Walk. They also have some projects going on in other cities in Broward County.
Okay, all right.
Is this, is this the, the project where there are two single-family homes?
There's.
Three single-family homes?
Three, I think.
Three single-family homes and existing multifamily.
Although one of them might be partially there. Anyway, I was just very happy when I can go to a P&amp;Z meeting and not disagree with anything.
The developer building as a bright, as opposed to like asking for all kinds of.
Well, no, they, they ask for nothing, no variances, no zoning change.
But it didn't go through. And they were able to make it through?
Yeah.
Oh, well.
And, and it was with opposition, because I know a number of, of people came forward who lived in the houses.
Well.
But.
But that's okay.
There was a tenant that was concerned about.
Right.
When he had to leave, I think, anyway. Anyway, I was very happy about that.
Okay. Anything else for the city manager? City attorneys report?
I have nothing to report.
Okay.
We already.
You did, oh, you did the new business, cool. Anything for next meeting agendas, or if it's late, we can, we're ready, all right. Any reports? We can.
Wave my report.
Wave. Commissioner?
I want to point out, and Katina just left, and I wanted to thank her for putting the article in about the generators in the multifamily buildings in Wilton Manners. And I also wanted to mention that Friday I'm going to be riding the bright train to Miami, and I think they're still testing it, so.
Good luck.
Well, or, or buena suerte.
Just one thing for the record before we adjourn, a number of us from the city, including our city manager, Commissioner Newton, Commissioner Green, and Johnny Goodnight, attended the Wimba event last night?
Yes.
It's just been, everything, every night this week has been some event.